Good evening. I'm Scott Lambert, Chairman, and I'd like to call to order the February 8th, 2023 East Whiteland Township Board of Supervisors meeting. Let's please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I'd like to introduce the attendees here at the table. To my left is Township Manager Steve Brown. Next to Steve is our Solicitor Bernadette Kearney. On my right is Vice Chair Rich Orillo and Peter Fixler on the supervisory side. Starting off on executive sessions, we discussed legal personnel and real estate issues on January 23rd at 9:30 in the morning, February 1st at 1:00 p.m., and then on February 8th today at 5:00 o'clock. John Nagel, if you can give everyone an update on our sewer sale situation?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, there really isn't anything new at this time. We're waiting for the Office of Consumer Affairs to, the appeal to be heard, and so the attorneys are working on filing briefs with respect to that appeal.
Okay, thank you. Next, give you, everyone, an update on the Route 30 corridor at this point in time. From status in which we have come together and recently had a large meeting pertaining to the February 28th deadline for the 2023 submission for the RACE grant. Due to technical savings and some other inflation-related numbers that seemed to have turned around, the grant submission is not the $25 million that we've put in last year, but it has been lowered to $23 million this year. We have had a recent discussion with House Representative Kristen Howard, and we have now her support again this year, and she is pushing from a lot of different angles on it. But some of the areas that we have talked about and that we've been updating for the February 28 submission includes updating costs, project schedules, debriefing from the U.S. DOT, setting up a meeting in Washington with representatives in Washington, discussing the merit criteria, and we've been putting together the updated letters of support that we need from both our political representatives in and around the area, but also from PennDOT, federal state legislators, and Chrissy Houland, Bob Casey, John Fetterman, and the incoming Shapiro administration. So we're doing a lot. Again, we went through this last year, so I think we've got a pretty good handle, but we're fine-tuning everything at this point in time. So we're looking forward to submitting that on February 28th. John has been one of the special coordinators of this project since stepping down as a Township manager. I don't know if there's anything else you want to add to this?
We also have Brian from McMahon. Chris Williams had a conflict and I couldn't make it, but if you wanted to go through to any degree the cost estimate or the project schedule, those were the two key items that we're working on. And this is the last meeting before the application's going to be filed, so we just really wanted to make a final status presentation to the board, and it doesn't have to be formal, and then ask for, possibly ask for a motion to have the staff put the final touches on the application. Brian's available electronically.
Yeah, I'm here. Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Right. Yeah, I think it was summarized pretty well. I'll add, just from a, I'll start just real quick from where we're at with the design standpoint. We have been developing the plans. We completed a survey late last summer. In the last few months, we've been actually working on the physical design of the road. Mine and grade is what it's referred to, so that we better refine. Right away impacts cost and schedule. As was noted earlier, the costs have changed. I know the grant request is down slightly, but the total project cost at this point was, the total project, that includes engineering inspection and everything, was $31 million in our original estimate from 2022. We updated it recently. Now it's the total cost is $32 million. So essentially the same from a total project cost standpoint. The construction cost itself has changed slightly, but the overall cost has only changed by $1 million. The schedule has also been updated. We originally had a, in 2022 for the RACE grant, we had a somewhat aggressive start of construction date of end of 2026. We've now updated the schedule to something more, a little more realistic with the new RACE grant application with a start date of end of, start of construction, end of 2022 is 27, and a completion date of 2030. Is there anything else you want to get to touch on at this time?
Sure, Brian. I'll add that part of the reason the cost has come down also is that we've received some grant money from the state, which has helped mitigate the cost somewhat.
Yeah, thank you.
Donna, do you have any? I'm sorry.
I believe that's the summary for this evening. We're not required to do a resolution or anything formal, but considering we're going to be asking for north of $20 million, I would ask that we consider doing a motion similar to one of the motions that we're going to do later today for a county grant for the comfort stations. So something as simple as the municipality hereby approves the filing of an application for the RACE grant for assistance, and that I would imagine will be Steve Brown as Township Manager will be authorized and directed to execute the, and file the applications with the U.S. Department of Transportation, something like, as simple as that. $20 million.
Does it make a motion?
Sure. Peter, if you can remember that.
I'll do my best. I'll make a motion to... Are you bringing me a cheat sheet? Thank you. I make a motion that the municipality of East Whiteland Township in Chester County, Pennsylvania approves the filing of an application for a Chester County Municipal Grant Program Assistance of federal RACE grant for the sum of 23? In excess of $20 million.
I do.
23.
23.
23.
377. 461.
461.
Do I have a second?
A second. And that's the application what we're applying for in federal funds.
That is correct.
Notwithstanding, notwithstanding that the 2027 number says almost $33 million, which is a difference of $10 million, which in theory is the township's costs unless we get other grants. Is that fair characterization?
Yes.
We have a number somewhere in the $5 million range, and we have a state grant for three and change.
Right.
That's why I said north of $20.
Yeah, I'm looking at the 2027 number. Yeah. Okay. Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And John, you're still up regarding update on the campus master plan unless Donna has someone in the queue?
And I think Ray Gorchowski is on virtually as well from Gorski to help with this part of the update. And this actually
Can you hear me, John?
Yeah, got you, Ray.
Thank you, folks. Yes, I'll just give you a quick update on the work that we've been doing over the last several months. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board and the meeting. The HVAC upgrades in the administration building are nearly complete. We are fine-tuning some of the equipment installation. We were there today actually doing some work, and there are two pieces of equipment that we've been waiting on for months from the manufacturer. I'm happy to report that those last two pieces of equipment are scheduled to ship on February 14th. So as soon as we receive them, we will make arrangements with Donna and the township folks to get that piece of the project completed, and that should actually put that project to bed. We are also working on procurement of materials for the previously approved lobby security upgrades. There's some ballistic rated materials in that project that have long lead items, but I'm working right now with the chief and Stephen and others to identify the specific materials needed for the project and get that ordered.
Great. Mr. Chairman, if I could also ask Ray to, on a different subject, but related to the campus master plan, would be to give an update on the comfort station at Mill Lane and the trail. There is a cost that, well, we're going to apply same deadline of February of this year, February 28th. It's for a county grant. This is a preservation partnership grant, and we've met with the county already, and Ray's firm has put together a cost estimate for comfort station there as well as a concept plan that's required by the grant application or the grant policy. So, Ray, can you summarize that briefly?
Yes. In essence, the structure, it's a new structure, roughly 25 foot by 22 and a half foot. There will be a women's room, and there'll also be a men's room. Each of the women's and men's rooms will have three fixtures, and there'll be a separate stall for a changing station. The construction will be concrete masonry block with epoxy paint on the inside, concrete floor, epoxy paint. Our thought process here is to make this as easy to clean as possible. We also are using vandal-resistant fixtures, plumbing fixtures, stainless steel, toilet journals, sinks, in order to, you know, in order to try to avoid vandalism and china fixtures being broken. Roof would be a standing seam metal roof. There'd be a path from the comfort station out to the trail. I think color scheme, I mean, I believe the supervisors will provide it with a packet that shows a rendering. The color scheme can be obviously whatever we need it to be. That can be changed. Total cost without the site work on that particular proposal was roughly $579,000. That included all of the engineering, all the design drawings, with the exception of the civil and the site work. That has not been defined yet, and we are in the process with Arrow Consulting defining the site work. What is going to be needed for water tie-ins, sewer tie-ins, and also for electrical tie-ins. That is a rendering on the screen of the proposed comfort station.
Once it's constructed, who's going to own it? We're building it because of the location of the county trail, and we're going to apply for county funds. Who's going to own it, and who's going to maintain it, and who's going to clean it?
That's between the township and the county. We haven't worked out those details.
To be decided. Okay. So it'll be the county?
Yes, it will.
I'll second that.
There's actually a resolution. We can put that on the, it's actually already on the consent agenda, but the county grant program requires a resolution.
How much of a grant are we applying for? Can we get any idea?
The whole, well, for 250, that's all, that's the cap.
Okay, 250, so what?
It's 250, and it's half of the project.
Almost half, yes.
Well, right. It goes up to a half of the project.
Oh, it does?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So we'll call for it at the consent agenda? Correct. Okay.
Sure.
Deb Mobile, we know who you are. We know where you live.
I know, but I'm trying to be professional. I have a question, particularly if we're going to have to pay for half of it, and if there seems to be already some indecision about who's going to be responsible for it. Why does it have to be so big? A half a million dollars for a bathroom? I would like a sauna and a jacuzzi. I mean, I, can, and why do we have to have, excuse me, in this day and age, why do we have to have separate women's and men's facilities? And it looks like there's a third door there. I don't know if that's for maintenance. Why can't we just have family facilities? Because families are unisex. You have two stalls, and if people, you know, if people have to wait, I'm sorry, take your bike elsewhere. You know, I, I don't, I think it's great that they have it, but these are a lot of maintenance along the way. There are also questions about maintenance in the winter. Will this be open in the winter? How are you going to keep it from freezing up? You know, and just because the grant's out there doesn't mean that we have to buy into everything. Yes, do I think there should be comfort stations, but is every single township putting up comfort station? And if not, what, why, why don't we all put little ones up? Everybody put two, two stalls and leave it at that, because every township along the way should be responsible to help out. Thank you.
Answer to some of the questions. I don't answer to all the questions, but the third door is for a utility to get to the mechanicals for the restrooms.
Correct.
These are standard sizes. We're not building anything out of the ordinary. It's pretty, Gorski has been involved in comfort station projects in other municipalities, and this is a pretty much a standard design. I think based on just the research that we've done, and we've talked to the county now for over three years to try to get this project launched, this is, this is what the model that we've come to based on discussions with the county. So it's not something we've just pulled out of a catalog. It's been thought through, and we'll certainly keep talking to the county about some of the things that were mentioned this evening, but this is the consensus that we came to with, with two individuals, the county that run these programs.
Deb, I think those are good questions, and I think you've raised the curiosity on the board, so I think we will somehow get back to you when we find out what those answers are. Donna, anything else? Public wise? Okay. Moving on, we just wanted to give everyone an update on the Route 202. It'll be on the consent agenda? So I want to give you an update on the 202 billboard situation and where we are at this point in time. We believe that all of the code, code items have been satisfied, and there are some site and erosion control permits related to the, to the, to the project that needs to be addressed before they continue or before the signs are allowed to function at this point in time. And I don't know, I don't think we have a really good date when that might be, because some of these, well, all of these points are not in our hands at this point in time. But to give you an idea of some of the things that there are, there needs to be a re-establishment of ground cover over the rock construction, the asset, access and the service driveway. There are installation of landscaping and additional tree plantings that need to be done. There needs to be installation of deer protection fencing to protect the remaining native species, and we also have removal of existing invasive species that need to be removed. So those are some of the areas that need to be addressed. Next is item 2F. We just wanted to let the public know that at this point in time, we have two openings on our volunteer committees that we're accepting applications for. First is one position for a three-year term on the environmental advisory council. I'm sorry, there are two positions there. And on the pension board, we have a, one opening for a three-year term. So if you know of anyone or you have any interest, please let the township know. Moving on to item number four pertaining to board motions and resolutions. Chief, if you can tell us about the vehicles that are on the agenda to discuss?
This vehicle is a 2023 Chevrolet Tahoe. It's replacing a 2015 Dodge pickup truck as an admin vehicle. So it's $44,000 with, says without outfit, but we're hoping to get the outfit somewhere between $4,000 and $8,000, depending on how much of the outfit we can use from the vehicles that we are going to sell on municipal. So this would probably be replacing, like I said, the 2015, but we're going to sell a 2014 Dodge truck in its place, and a 2015 will move in as a spare. So that's our plan at this time. We got a pretty good deal. We actually got it $1,000 under what it was supposed to be because we ordered it back in, I don't know, it was October or November when it came in. So we locked into that price, so.
How long's the wait time for delivery?
Well, it's, it's here. So we thought it was going to be longer, but it came in second week of January, so we've been waiting to get through this meeting, and if it's, if we're okay, then it's going to be delivered Friday.
Okay, make a, would you like to make a motion?
Sure.
To approve the purchase of the 2023 Chevy Tahoe from Whitmire, group for $44,000 without outfit.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. You can drive it home tonight.
Thank you. It'll be Friday. It won't be me, but it'll be Friday.
Legally.
Next, we would like to have maybe a quick overview from Greg Lewis on the life safety program.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a follow-up from our meeting last month where it was voted to adopt a life safety inspection program of the commercial properties within East Whiteland Township. And what this program is going to do, it's going to make the business owners safer, the firefighters in this township safer by going around and checking for common fire safety issues within commercial properties in the township, such as fire extinguishers, fire alarm systems, sprinkler systems. This program will work in conjunction with the codes department to ensure that all these life safety services in our commercial properties are up to the current standards to make our community safer.
Right. We ended up having a long conversation about that last week. Any questions from the audience or public? Yeah, I think it's a great program to prevent any catastrophic situations occurring for both our personnel and then the owners of the properties as well. So would you like to make a
Sure.
Motion?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 202314 for the, to implement the life safety program. Only question I have, this will be done with the understanding that when an item is found and has to be repaired, the owner has a reasonable time, not excessive time, to repair it.
Yeah, that's correct. The, the plan that we're going to implement is prior to doing the inspection, we're going to hand out a, what we call a pre-inspection checklist to the business owners that before the formal inspection takes place, they will have time to see what we're coming in to look for, and then based on the severity of what we find in the facility will dictate the timeframe that they have to rectify the issue. We're not going to go in there and say, we'll be back in two hours if you don't have it fixed. There's going to be reasonable time.
Deb, second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And passes. Next pertains to job offers to individuals, but first I just want to go on record, Paul Brown? Is Paul Brown?
Not believe yourself.
Okay, then I'll just, I'll state it. Paul Brown is not a relative or an in-law of mine. Nancy Brown. Yes. Steve, now that we totally threw you off.
Well, then, yeah, I'll, I'll make the same disclaimer. He's not my relative either. Yes, right. Anyone who's related to Paul. Well, Paul, well, what we're doing is we're ratifying or asking the board to ratify job offers that have been extended to Paul. Paul is a local young man, Great Valley graduate, presently is a volunteer with our fire, excuse me, fire company, and he serves as an emergency medical technician with a number of ambulance services in the area. The other young man, Kevin Hare, works part-time for the Phoenixville Fire Department and full-time with the Arlington, Virginia Fire Department. And again, we've extended offers to both these young men, so hopefully the board will ratify those offers, and we can add them to our part-time pool.
Any public comments? Any public comments? Any questions from the board?
None.
I'll make a motion.
Please make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to ratify the job offers to Paul Brown and Kevin Hare as part-time firefighters slash emergency medical technicians.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Job offers are approved.
Thank you.
Next, next on the agenda, Al, if you can lead us regarding the storm water management proposal for Three Ton.
Yes. There, we actually have two proposals. The first proposal is a channel restoration that is on, between the properties of 383 Ton Road and 400 Three Ton Road. There is a, or was a swale essentially between the two properties. There is a 36-inch storm pipe that discharges drainage from the south, from under the railroad tracks, drainage from the south, about 36 acres, I believe, rains there and discharges the pipe that the, at the railroad crossing is about roughly six feet above ground. So the water that comes through there has a lot of velocity, a lot of power, and it essentially erodes when it hits the ground. And it's causing a lot of sediment being deposited between the two properties and blocks drainage going down toward the cul-de-sac of Three Ton Road. So what we're proposing to do is prepare construction plans to line that channel and also design a sediment removal system at the cul-de-sac of Three Ton Road so that the sediment is removed before it goes into the storm system and into other people's infiltration systems, stormwater systems.
Will that slow the water down at all, Al? That system?
No. This is just designed to remove sediment and also redo the channel, align channel. We're proposing to do a concrete channel, trap channel, so that it's, number one, some of that sediment hopefully will wash down to the sediment removal structure and, and then it can be removed at the structure rather than having to clean out several hundred feet between the two properties.
That's an existing condition that's been in place how long?
I'm not sure how long that culvert's been there, but it's been there before any of those buildings that Three Ton Road were put in.
Yeah, let, let me just interject here and say, just speak briefly. Back when we were preparing the 2022 budget, staff recommended that the board set aside additional funds to study some of the storm drainage and flooding problems that we have in different areas of the township. And I believe it was five projects were identified and, and this was one of them. It's, Rich, it's, it's been there ever since the, you know, Three Ton Road and the, the business park was built, which I'm not even sure how, how long ago that was, probably in the 80s or 90s. And so water has always drained between 380 and, and 400. Arrow came back with a, a number of options that really were just channel restoration instead of just having all the erosion and sedimentation that, that takes place in the silt and the rock that washes into the, the common stormwater system for the business park. Arrow came up with three options for basically lining the channel with different materials. We met with the property owner, actually both property owners. They requested that we consider different options. And Al just explained the one option, which is, again, addresses the channel, but also takes an extra step to try to address the rock and silt and material that gets washed down in its current state. But it does not, as, as Peter asked, it does not do anything to slow the water down or, or manage the water. It just conveys it and hopefully cleans it before it gets into the storm system. So that's what this option is. And back to, back to the board, if you have more questions about it, if not, Al can talk about the second option.
The culvert was there before the Three Ton Road development was constructed?
Yes.
And it was there because of the railroad?
Yes.
So was it the railroad that put it there?
Yes. Railroad put that in for the drainage that's coming from the south. The drainage area, maybe if you could put that map up. Drainage area is about 36 acres on the south side of the railroad tracks. The high point is essentially Summit Road.
Yeah, I see it.
So, and it's, it's quite wide, the drainage area. That property is all developed with residential.
Sure is.
And doesn't have any stormwater facilities by today's standards, let's say.
Summit waters, Ridgewood Ridge, all built before real stormwater existed. So all that water is coming from all those houses down through that culvert in between 380 and 400.
Yes. The drainage area is outlined in red on the plan. And that's, that's a rough drainage area based on county topo maps.
Right.
And it's roughly 36 acres that goes into that culvert, right where the, the bright green line is going.
Yeah, all right.
And you can kind of see the path. The blue line is the actual culvert underneath the railroad and then the, I guess, kind of a greenish-blue line, that's the actual swale and the route it takes to get to the cul-de-sac of Three Ton Road. And there was actually an inlet structure, a head wall and pipe put in at the end of that swale at the cul-de-sac to pick up that drainage.
Fair, all right.
That's at the very top, right?
Donna, do we need, yeah, we need you to come up and be on the mic.
I'm, I'm sorry, my name's Kate Stauffer. I think I'm really concerned about the way we take down trees in this township and build buildings because prior to those buildings being there on Three Town, Three Ton Road, I'm sure that water was not an issue. And I know that at the far end of the cul-de-sac, trees are being taken down there as well. I don't know what they're building there next to Rossi's place, but this is being built for me personally on all the building that the township continues to do. And then it causes problems like this. But the problem is there and it has to be solved.
Al, I had asked you a question that Kathleen just asked as well pertaining to trees and what impact that had on this situation. As an expert, can you tell what the answer was?
Well, if that property remained natural, obviously, it wouldn't be an issue because nobody, no buildings would be there. So trees obviously help for stormwater whenever you build anything, buildings, residential, you're always creating a purpose area. Today's standards, though, as opposed to what was around in the 70s, you have to infiltrate it, you have to slow the rate down and things like that. So really, if that was, if that residential development was developed today, there would be a lot of other stormwater facilities that wouldn't allow the increase in stormwater.
Understanding that, Al, what we have is a lot of water shooting down the hill. I believe the concern with the two property owners is the erosion happening from all that immense water. Is, is there an engineering possibility to reduce that flow? Or is that a really?
Well, that, that's actually the second, we, we were proposing to do a drainage area study and that's the second proposal.
There's your segue.
That, and, and that drainage area study is actually for the south side of the railroad tracks, that red area. A proposal there is, is strictly a study, though. It's not necessarily coming up with options, but more so looking at potential areas where we could design facilities to reduce the rate of stormwater going through that culvert.
If there was room on the south side of the tracks, off the top of your head, if you can say it, the estimated size of a basin that would be needed to hold the water for 36 acres, long enough for it to trickle down instead of rush down? Pure guess.
I can't, I can't really, it, it would have to be quite large.
Yeah, huge. It would have to be huge.
Yes. The problem, be honest.
So houses over there.
The problem is, is all the wooded areas, those are all developed properties, so there is no vacant property.
Right.
To go and do any stormwater facilities.
Sure.
You have to obtain easements, permanent easements.
But you have to.
Separate construction easements, you're going to have to do land acquisition.
Sure.
Pre-removal, just to excavate, you're going to have to haul material out between homes and things like that. So again, removing trees, excavating materials. So the cost would be, if you're doing one basin, it's, it's going to be quite expensive.
Sure. And big, yeah, I know.
Okay, any other questions? Would you like to make a motion? I believe we're making a motion for a proposal.
There's two proposals, actually. One is for the drainage area study and one is for the north side to do the line channel and the sediment removal structure.
Right. The, the channel restoration with the sediment removal is, we'll say it's, it's a more sophisticated solution than just lining the channel and allowing the water to, to, you know, just continue to run unchecked. And so that, again, would not manage the water in any fashion. The second one, as we just discussed, is a, is a study, but where does that study lead? You know, we'd have to see what it says, but there are, I don't want the board to have any illusions, you know, it's all private property, there's a lot of trees, you have the sewer lines, there, there's a lot of issues, you know, to overcome, but you'd have to do a study first to even really identify and fully understand those issues.
What's the study going to do except tell us that there's a problem and there's no space to solve it on the north side of the tracks? Am I wrong or, I'm no engineer? Right?
True. But there, there might be some, yes, and, and the solution in my mind personally, my mind, the solutions are going to be very expensive. At least a million, million dollars.
And that's going to be the end result of this study if we do it anyway?
Essentially, yes.
In order to get to the solution, is the study even necessary? And what's the relative cost? What's the study going to cost?
We're proposing to do the study for $4,000.
It's a lot cheaper than a million, but is it going to do anything? And how long's it going to take?
The, the study, probably looking, we'd have to do some fieldwork, actually walk the area before leaves get on the trees. Probably have some report ready for May.
Anyone do?
In, in the event that we don't go forward with this proposal, what, what are some of the ramifications? Do you know, Steve or Zach? I mean, this is being initiated by.
Well, we, again, the property owner was a part of the process a year and a half ago. And so we reacted to the, the problem that exists in the request of the property owners. Sorry, there's two owners. And again, the initial proposal, you, you've got an unlined, it's not a swale, it's, it's a gully. I mean, it, there's a lot of erosion, there's a lot of water and a lot of erosion there. And again, the initial solution was to, you know, maybe make it a, I, I forget what they were, concrete line channel, one was riprap, different ways of trying to prevent the erosion from taking place. The property owners asked us to revisit them and, and I said, well, we've got to bring it back to the board. And so Arrow has come up with these two options. One is the study, which is, we've talked about, and again, the other is do something with the channel, but try to manage the, the sediment and silt and rock as well.
And this channel was not foreseeable at the time this 424296.8 parcel was developed? Wasn't there? We couldn't see it?
I, I wasn't here at the time, but.
I know.
I would assume that it was still there at the time. Probably existed when they developed that, the residential property.
Will the study include options on corrections?
It'll just identify areas that we can do, we potentially do, stormwater.
On the north side?
No, on the north side, on the north side, no.
Okay.
No.
So you'll focus on the south side correction?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. The drainage area study, the $4,000 is strictly for before it goes through the culvert, the railroad culvert, let's call it.
But the study will also include options to solve or help the.
No, that's a, that's a separate. There's two. One, one is strictly for conveying the stormwater in a line channel to a sediment structure to remove sediment before it goes through the stormwater system of the development. That's one. And that's strictly conveying it from the culvert to the cul-de-sac ball of Three Ton Road.
And that's the proposed solution?
Correct. That's basically, with that solution, we're creating construction plans.
So the study on the north side is basically worthless. Doesn't do anything. Right?
It's just a study that will give up potential options.
So are we being asked now to approve a million dollar expenditure?
No.
Okay, good.
You're asking, we're, I'm asking to approve first the channel restoration, I'll call it channel restoration on 383 Ton Road on the north side, restoring the, the drainage flow channel and designing the sediment removal structure before it goes into the underground storm piping.
And what's that going to cost?
That's, the proposal for that is $8,000. And that's complete construction plan. I think you have our open work.
So the million dollars is to implement the $8,000 design?
No.
Okay, good.
The $8,000 design is, again, on the north side. The million, what would cost construction, what I'm saying would start at a million dollars is south of the construction of what we would do on the south side of the road. the construction of what we would do on the south side of the road.
Let me just say that, again, we've met with the property owners and we're here in reaction to their request to go further than we did with the original potential solutions. We discussed with them the difficulties associated, right, you can perform the study, but to do anything beyond the study is very, very difficult and we explained that to them. I think the best option, frankly, is the eight thousand dollar option to do the work on the channel and to do something to address the sediment. Now, one of the property owners is here, he can certainly speak on his behalf, but we've explained the difficulties with the, where the study takes you.
And once the eight thousand dollar scenario is implemented and the drainage channel is corrected, how long is it gonna take before it's destroyed again?
Well, we're gonna be proposing a concrete line channel, so it should wash all the sediment down into the sediment chamber at the end of the cul-de-sac and that could be maintained by public works cruiser on a regular basis.
Right. And it should contain the water to prevent it from, the channel from meandering one way or the other closer to the existing building, closer to any other improvement. So, you know, it should contain the water and, again, help to address the silt sediment problem. But again, it doesn't address the management of it, which is very difficult.
Three-ton road is not dedicated yet either.
Correct.
Now, assuming this is implemented, if we don't dedicate three-ton road, it's the owner's problem to clean out perpetually, right?
Correct.
Okay, good. All right.
Rich, can you clarify that? This is a clarify dedication.
Clarify?
Dedicated.
What dedicated is?
Oh. Right now, the developer owns the road, whoever owned all that land from the beginning.
Do you know who that is?
I am guessing it's a guy named Rossi. I don't know who he is. But if we don't accept dedication, this water going on that road is their problem. My opinion. Okay.
We really need you to have come up if you're gonna ask questions.
The original idea was that the property owners were willing to participate in this. So it wasn't just the township designing and building on its own. We, and here comes one of the, one of the property owners now, he can speak to that. And we would also have to talk to Mr. Rossi, who is the owner of the street. And he should be a participant in it as well.
My name's Rick Shyby. I own three eighty-three ton road. And what started this seventeen months ago is I bought the property thirty-six months ago and we started having all this thirty-six acres of water come rushing down into our property. And if you've ever been on Business Thirty right by losing Strawbridge and you've seen dirt, that's my dirt. It's my dirt that's come all the way down. And so we are, we are one or two storms away from this culvert being eroded and my building being flooded. So thirty-six acres of water getting ready to come into my building if we don't do something. So that's why we started this conversation. So my neighbor at four hundred is Mid-Atlantic Mechanical. So they, this is what they do for a living. They go and dig holes and put buildings in them. And, and I just wanna protect my property. So we had a conversation of doing a three-way split with the building or doing this project. So that's what started all this. I'm not dumping this all on you guys, but I also shouldn't have thirty-six acres of water dumped on me. So that's, that's the balancing act. That's why.
Appreciate the cooperation.
Yeah.
Surprised your engineer at the time you bought and built didn't let you know about this. But that's between you and your engineer. So what's the, the request is to, request us to participate with the property owners to implement an eight thousand dollar project? Is that what we're being asked to?
Right now, the request is to authorize Arrow to prepare construction plans for the channel restoration and sediment control structure. Or construction plans for that.
For eight thousand dollars.
Eight thousand dollars, yes.
For eight thousand dollars. Sorry, I'm not speaking to Mike.
And then any construction of the construction plans is open to discussion?
Right.
Once it's established, once that plan is established?
Once that plan's ready, yes, then it can be put out to bid.
Al, you've got two proposals here. Is going with the channel restoration without the initial, whatever you're calling it here.
The drainage area.
The drainage area study. What impact not going with the area drainage study does that do with the channel restoration study? One without the other? What happens?
Right now, we're, we're looking to solve the sediment problem on those two properties. Regardless of doing the drainage area study, there's still gonna be sediment either way. Even if we reduce the drainage from the south, there will still be sediment because that culvert underneath the railroad is five, six feet above ground. When the water hits the ground, it churns everybody, everything up and washes it downhill.
And you, and you'll be able to maybe come up with some type of mitigation solution if you do the channel restoration study?
Correct. The intent of that is to keep the water out of the enclosed storm system. Because that piping at the cul-de-sac, it's actually routed and it goes behind the doggy daycare there and into their infiltration system. If nothing is done, that could actually damage their stormwater system.
Okay. Who owns the pipe that goes under the railroad? The rail company, right?
Yes.
If that's ever clogged, it's their problem to unclog it.
Right.
Well, to get their attention is impossible. I know.
Well, part of the issue is that pipe is within their property, so it's not accessible from the property owner's property.
Sure.
So when it comes out, you can't do anything without their permission, go on their property to do anything. Essentially, it's got, I don't know, twenty, thirty feet after it hits the, hits the ground, that it's still on their property, creating the sediment and then washing it downhill onto their property.
I'll be okay with going with the eight thousand dollars just designing the plans, but after that, it's gonna have to be up to the two or three parties to come up with the cost to implement it. My opinion. At least we can get it done quickly and, yeah, try to save some property. I don't know what you guys think.
I'm okay with that. Let's, I'm okay with doing the channel restoration and figure out the details, but realize that, as you said, responsibility, I'm not sure what happens after that.
Right.
We don't know what.
This should have been known by the engineers of both three eighty and four hundred. My opinion. I'm no engineer. Ultimately, yes. Yes. Ultimately, yes. Yes.
Okay. Would you like to?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to authorize option one to, for Arrow to design construction plans to
Channel restoration?
Channel restoration. Right.
Channel restoration on three eighty, three-ton road. Have a second?
Al, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Get her done.
Step one, anyway.
Moving on to another simple topic, John, if you would kinda talk to us about the term, short-term, intermediate-term investments available?
I can guarantee you this will be more positive than the last discussion. This is about making more money. So as
Fifty-eight million dollars worth of positive?
How much?
Fifty-eight million? Okay, I know.
Well, if you invest it over time, sure, absolutely. Depends how long the project is gonna take to, anyway. As most of us know, we've been looking at opportunities to increase our rates of return. The market has had an uptick recently in our investments and also satisfy the concerns regarding preservation of principal, which is also known as risk. So what the recommendation is, is for the sewer sale money, which is basically on hold until the appeal has been cured, is to invest those excess funds with or through PFM, Public Financial Management, and the product that they have that meets our needs most directly is Pliget Reserve, which I also think checks the box with respect to that it only invests in US Treasuries, notes and bills and federal government agencies, which are, as most of us know, are backed by the full faith and credit of the federal government. So we would recommend that we take half of the proceeds and invest it for ninety days and the other half to invest in six months. And at that time, it'll give us time to take a look at what our long-term investment policy is, and I'll get to that in a minute. The other thing it does prevent us from is, because there's concerns regarding the commercial paper, high-grade commercial paper, that some of the other products that are out in the market have, but seem to concern some of us. So that's, that's kind of the nutshell on the sewer sale money. And then we also have a good amount of our money, most of our money, in operating funds with Key Bank. And so the recommendation there is very similar. We would recommend that we take a quarter of those funds and invest similarly in Treasuries and federal government agencies for ninety days and twenty-five percent in, for a hundred and eighty days. The one area that has not yet been resolved or recommended is the amount of money that Key Bank is holding and that's known in the business as compensating balances. And we're still working with Key to come up with proposals that make the rates of return on those investments more competitive and something we can come back to the board on at some point, hopefully in March. But again, for the longer-term, sustainable approach, we, I recommend that we assign the oversight of all these funds, we're talking about almost seventy-five million dollars, to our pension and OPEB committee. The folks that are on that committee have done a great job of managing the pension and retirement health funds. And I think this would fit right into their niche of taking a look at how we invest those funds on a long-term basis and establishing an investment policy. So that's the recommendation.
I agree with that a hundred percent. I know the four members of the pension board are all financially versed very well and do an excellent job monitoring the pension funds. Absolutely, yeah.
And I know, I sat in one of these, these meetings and went through the options and I think they're better, well-versed to understand and choose the correct options. I'll also add, though, that in this process, we have looked at more than one, more than one company to work with in terms of other options that might be available. I know we have a strong relationship and so do most townships in Pennsylvania with this organization called Pliget. But it was good that we ended up talking with Key Bank as well.
Agreed. Does the pension board know yet that they're being charged with this responsibility?
I would recommend that they have the right of refusal, however.
They're capable.
They're very capable of it. I think it's a sweet spot for them and I think the challenge will be greatly accepted.
Agreed.
I'm not them.
No, I know. Okay. When's our next meeting?
It's this month.
Oh, good.
Yeah, it's like the third week or fourth week in the month.
Tuesday or Wednesday?
I think it's a Wednesday.
It has been Wednesdays. The fifteenth is a Wednesday.
So, so no decisions would be made until it got moved to the pension committee?
Well, I think we need, I think the time is ticking and that was one of the things we talked about at staff level. You've seen the yield curve start to flatten, so I think it's time to do things temporarily, but I think the better strategy is to, this phase two, I guess, would be to come up with some recommendations long-term. We're getting into some serious money that we're talking about.
And the proposed temporary solution?
Is?
Is Treasuries and government agencies. No commercial pay, high-grade commercial paper. That seemed to be kind of the sweet spot we ended up at.
Somewhat split between the two organizations you were dealing with, right? Which is what you've got in here.
Right. And it comes out to about half and half. If you're as positive as I am about the outcome of the sale, probably as early as August, as late as a year from now, that should be cured. And so we'll end up paying about twenty million dollars off in our outstanding debt, which then brings it back to about the same amount for both financial institutions.
And the two timeframes that we would break it into are the shorter time is, how many months?
Three.
Three months? Okay, good.
Yeah.
That's before June, when the government does their thing down in Washington.
Right.
And the other half is six months.
Right.
All right. So that pushes us to the time where, who knows what they'll do down there?
Right.
But if, if there is such a thing as a problem with the government and Treasuries, we are far from the only affected group.
Correct. I think the economy will significantly be impacted if that ever happens.
Sure.
We did have proposals from some of the two that proposed to go much longer and I would rather stay within the six-month range.
Absolutely.
The market's just too, we're now the beneficiary of a great market, but that's not gonna last forever.
Yeah, agree.
Okay.
Okay, excuse me for one second. Usha wants to speak.
Hi, everyone. Just, our next pension meeting is next Wednesday. So what I was just asking, do we want to keep the same members for our pension meeting that we, we have a whole part of the pension? Do you want to keep same members for our investment option? I thought we should create a new committee. If somebody from there want to serve, that's fine, but I was hoping we can have like board boss and some new members who has expertise in investment. I don't know if you.
I think it's a, well, I'll speak for myself. I think it's a worthy cause. The challenge that we've had with some of these volunteer candidates is we just don't get enough candidates that are interested and capable of doing what we're asking them to do.
We're already short one pension board person, pension board person right now.
Yeah.
So choosing a subcommittee may be problematic.
The reason I'm asking for this because we want to pick somebody who have really, really good understanding in investment, because we are talking about a lot of money and we want expert on our side. So that's what I'm asking. If possible, if not, then can we decide what, can we decide what? I was hoping we'd be in a good hand if we had expert on our side.
Well, I've been certainly liaison to the pension board for a while. And I'm pretty comfortable with those guys. They're very capable. That's all they do is investments all day. That's all they do is investments all day, every day. One of them also is a CPA, but they work with investment firms. I think it's a good idea to have them take a look at this.
Right.
Yeah.
Actually, I do not know their background that much, if you're comfortable, then that's fine.
Yeah, they're very, very capable.
Yeah, capital markets are capital markets. I, I think they're going to be comfortable in that.
Sure. Oh, I agree with you. Any chance to move it to Tuesday? I have a bank board meeting on Wednesday, third Wednesday, so...
Sure.
I'd like to be there, but I'd like to not be there.
Well, I can deliver the news.
Yeah.
I definitely can ask the board. They definitely go with that, so I'll ask her, you know, if they can change it to Tuesday.
Okay, yeah, try. Okay.
I'll try to manage it for you.
Make that Thursday?
I mean, I can give them option, it can be whatever works. If it works for you, Thursday, I'll do that. Yeah, sure.
I knew that. I didn't forget that.
So I guess we'll table this particular option until...
No, I don't think we're, I think we're looking at...
I would make the choices now and then have them check and look at it.
Right.
Because the, the three-month option, they can withdraw or change with no penalty. It's the six-month option where you, if you change it, there's an effect, right? So half of it change every day.
Right, right.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, all right. I'm looking at the $6 million step ladders that you've got going, which you wouldn't use in this case, would be something else.
It just goes too far out.
Right, I agree with you, I agree with you. But I'm just looking at the options that are sitting here.
Well, quite honestly, the options that were created were kind of created without. I mean, that was something that they proposed. We didn't set up any kind of structure, recommended structure for it, and so that was what they came up with. So it's kind of an apples and oranges comparison, and that's why we came up with the standard of let's go either 90 days or 180 days.
If we want to be totally safe, we can put it all 30 days and see what...
Good.
That's within, well within the risk time period. The difference is 50 basis points, it looks like, which is, on a lot of money, it adds up, but it's not all the money in the world for safety or flexibility, I guess, so...
It's up to the board.
What do you think?
What if we put half in the, the initial offer idea of, of the three-month T-bills and then put the remaining amount into the, into the 30-day?
Yeah.
I mean, it's okay.
Sure.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
It's a lot of money. So half in 30 days, half in 90 days?
Yes.
Okay, that'll make that motion.
You have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Probably the most difficult thing we have tonight is from John Neild.
Yeah, we're going right back to spending money now instead of making money. Item F and G are five trucks that we need to replace. Three of these were on last year's budget, and they were canceled by the manufacturers because of supply chain issues, so we end up with five. We don't normally like to do that, but that's where we're at with this year. They range from one of our, our large truck, which is under G, is 2009. These other trucks go from 2010 through 2012, and this is out the prices there for, for these four under F. They're right there with our budget. The one under G is more than what we had budgeted. Just, it's unbelievable what's happened to the market of large trucks. Their costs are just going through the roof. So we do, I spelled it out in the packet, we do have the option to use some of the liquid fuels money that we get from the state for equipment, and into our equipment fund right now, we have about $190,000 to offset what our budget number was to what the truck's going to cost. And these are two smaller dump trucks with everything. These are full-upfit, plows, salt spreaders, the whole yard, nine yards. Large truck the same way. There's one utility body truck, which is the toolbox is on the back, and one is a flatbed, but steak body truck.
They available in stock now?
No, these are 10 to 12 months out.
That's good, because we're not going to need it this winter, anyway.
No, doesn't look like it. We've been lucky so far, so.
You should have had the car salesman negotiate. You'd have him, you'd have him here tonight.
Right, now, these are all Co-Stars. Yeah. The Co-Stars is very interesting now, too. You know, when times are a little tough for the dealers, they give you nice discounts, very minor discounts in Co-Stars this year. So it used to be $4,000 or $5,000, we're at $1,500,000, so.
Okay. Peter, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase for the Public Works 2023 trucks, a, let's just say, one F-350 and two F-550s, I'm sorry, three F-550s, to replace previous Public Works trucks. Should I enlist all the prices?
Yeah, for the record, could you?
For the record, the F-350 for a replacement price of $73,936. The 1-550 for $108,248, $48, and another 550 for $108,248, and a third 550 for $75,124.
You nailed it. And there's one on the second, next page.
Oh, man, the Mack...
That's the big one.
Truck, that is the add-on, isn't it?
That wasn't that.
That wasn't that, okay. The Mack, that must be a big one. GR42FR, oof, $210,000, $210,000 and $273, $273. Excuse my reading.
Second?
Pauline?
Aye.
Aye. All in favor, aye. Can we have a party when that comes, when they all come in next year?
Yeah, we just want to make sure they come in. Last year, we had the same thing and they canceled, but it looks a lot better this year, so. Surprisingly, for the 550s, they're not too bad. The big truck went up substantially.
John, any of the car, any of the trucks, trucks that you were going to replace that are going to take 10 to 12 months to come in, are they really bad shape?
There's one, the, the large truck, that's, it's not great, but for some standards, we'll be fine. We'll get through without any major repairs.
Do you need a requisition for bubble gum or anything like that?
Nah, I think we're okay for that.
To keep it going? All right, well, I think we can handle that if you need it. All right, thanks, John. And moving on to, we know, the triangle.
Yep, favorite project. We had the bid opening for the Route 29, Route 30 Island Beautification Project. We had seven bidders, last time we had zero. At $150,000 budget, we weren't sure where prices were going to come in, but it worked out well. We have two prices that you have in the recommendation letter. It was based on the alternates of what the border would be. One would be pavers, the other would be stamped concrete. The pavers came in at $113,000, and the stamped concrete was $109,000. We were recommending the paver border. You have more options in color, texture, and also long-term maintenance. The stamped concrete, if it gets damaged, is very difficult to match, and the pavers are relatively simple to take out, put back in. So that was, the low bid was Albert Cipollini and Junior and Sons. That was what we were recommending, $113,588.65.
How can, how soon can they begin this project?
We have to go through contracts, normally, that's normally about a month, and then just a matter of when they're ready to go. There's not really any long lead time on any of these items.
Okay.
It's mostly removal and plants, and it'll be a perfect time.
Okay. Just for everyone's knowledge, what we're talking about is the triangle that exists at 29 and 30. It's just a concrete barren ugliness, and we wanted to do something to make it, to make it more attractive coming into the community. So that's what that, this is what this project is. I will go with, I will personally go with your recommendation as far as, as, as the pavers, based on what you're saying, for longevity and matching up the colors, because I'm sure somewhere along the line, someone's going to drive up there, there's going to be some damage, so trying to match the colors seems to make sense. It'd be more problematic with the stamped concrete. I don't know about Peter and, and Rich, your thoughts?
I'm in agreement with the pavers.
Fine, yeah, whatever you think is best.
Okay.
I would just paint it green, but go ahead.
After next week, after Sunday, we'll paint it green. All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the bid be awarded to, could you repeat the name? John, was it Albert Cipollini?
Albert Cipollini, Jr.
Junior and Sons to perform the 2930 Island Beautification Project for the price of...
$113,000.
$113,000.
$588.
$588 and...
65 cents.
65 cents.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And to let everyone know as well, I don't know if it'll make it through on here, but John and I, we're, we're, we're starting to, to identify some key points where we're going to try to change and add signage, attractive signage for this community, rather than some of the things that exist out there or don't exist out there. Certainly look at the major roadways. So we're, we're looking to do that, and John's staff has got some talented people that will be able to perhaps build the post signage. I'm not sure what you call, if you call it...
Yeah, it's more of a sign structure.
Sign structure.
Specifically in the parks, and then we'll look at options on the entries.
Entry ways as well. Something that'll be attractive.
Sure.
Again, trying to add some things. Anyway, John, thanks.
Want to be here for a while, I got the next few items, too, so.
Sure, come on. Could you come up?
Please come up.
There is maintenance, it goes along with it. Sure, go ahead.
I was just wondering if weeds were going to come up, could the way they do now?
It used to be you just did sand, there's polymer sand now that doesn't let things grow in it, and it's also, there's going to be maintenance above. We're going to be out there because the center part of the island is decorative grasses. There's going to be mulch in there, so we do have items to take care of, but we're not going to get like it is with cracked up concrete.
And, and then, and then we'll follow up with an ordinance where there's no political signs that can be put in there during the year. What do you think?
For you guys to deal with on that, so.
Good luck.
Good luck, right? Okay. Moving on, John?
Okay, we're into asking for permission to advertise. First item is the 2023 Road Paving Project. I gave you the list of roads, a few different neighborhoods spread out around the township, and we'd like to get that advertised and hopefully have out the bid and approval at the April meeting.
Regular maintenance going forward, no problems, no issues. Any questions? I believe Fontstock is on that list?
Yes, it is. We did half of it two years ago, and the rest of it will be on the issue.
Fontstock, Woodview, Spring. Yeah, several up at the General Warren Village. Yep.
Right, and then Trout Run, Basco, Cottonwood, up in Lockwood, and then right up the street here with Lime Killen, Valley Creek, and Manor View. Also a section of Church Road right by that new toll development that's in really bad shape, and the entrance to the Great Valley Parkway, which will tie in with, Pendott is doing 29 this year. Yeah, they're doing from Route 30 down to Phoenixville Pike, and then we'll catch the entrance into the corporate center.
That's fantastic news.
Been a long time coming for that.
If we could, next, next mountain to climb is Sweetsford Road.
Has the cost of asphalt skyrocketed like everything else out there, or has it stayed somewhat steady?
Yeah, it was really high towards the end of last year. It's come down a little bit, but it's really, it's variable, and they have escalator clauses built in, which through our liquid fuels funds, it depends on the day they pave and what the cost is at that. Not usually anything really significant. All right, the next is approval to advertise some equipment for sale on municipal. We have two large generators, a 75 KW and 85 KW, that were from two old pump stations that were decommissioned. We have the aluminum handicap ramp from the old modular building that used to be on the side of the building. We have some old sewer equipment, TV camera and the related equipment that went with it, and one prefabricated concrete building, which was one of the old pump stations, which that's over a church road. Brought in on a truck, it can be taken out on a truck. I don't think we'll get any money for it, maybe a dollar, but if they come and remove it, we'll be happy to give it to them, so.
That, could we put toilets in that and...
We looked at it. Honestly, we looked at it, and it's a little too small for that. It's only 10 by 12. Or actually, no, that's 12 by 16, that one.
I don't know, 10 by 12?
Yeah, it doesn't quite have the doors and access that you need.
Hey, you know, it's better than the trees. Any questions?
No, no.
Make a motion, Rich.
Make a motion to advertise the road paving project for 2023 and the equipment for sale on municipal.
Have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Moving on to planning and development, Zach?
Sure, thanks, Scott. So no applications before the board tonight, looking for a final decision. We do have two applications here that are requesting authorization at the staff and the solicitor draft a resolution. Those are the two projects on South Malin Road, 9 and 10, South Malin. These two applications were last before the board in December, I believe. At that time, we began going through the review letters and the waiver requests, and seemed like the conversation gravitated towards the adjacency to the Bishop Tube site and some of the environmental questions. We've since received Phase One reports for each of the properties. We've also done some of our own analysis and document reviews, essentially our own Phase One by our environmental consultant, to see what available information there was about these sites and their relation to the surrounding properties and the activities on those properties. They seem to have concluded that there are no, there's no cause to believe that there's environmental contamination on these sites. So we have a little bit more information than we had, I would say, at the December meeting. The other item was, I would say, a general question about how these sites relate to the surrounding improvements, where they are in relation to South Malin Road, where they are in relation to the railroad and Route 30. And sort of part and parcel to that was a question of which trees would be removed. So there was requested to be a site meeting offered to the board, which we've done. Myself and Scott were out on site a few weeks ago now, and kind of got a better feel for, I would say, where the limits of the disturbance are, which trees are coming down, which are to remain. So I just want to kind of give that little... Um, so I just want to kind of give that little bit of background since it's been a month or so since this was discussed. The applicants, engineers, two separate applicants, but it's one engineer representing the two of them. It's here this evening. Scott, I don't know if there's anything you want to provide or maybe just kind of walk through some of the comments in the, the review letters or if the board has a preference on how we approach that?
Um, I think probably the easiest way to start is why don't we just go through nine first and then, and then go through ten? Because um, I think they're, they're both in a little bit of a different place. Um, so looking at the nine Malon Road site, we're proposing to construct a six thousand square foot building uh, and a shed. Um, the site is located at the end of South Malon Road. Um, it's directly south of the Bishop Tube site and located directly north of the railroad tracks. The existing site is currently all wooded. We have conditional use approval. We also have um, approved variances and we have our preliminary final recommendation from the planning commission. The consultant letters for the nine Malon Road project are pretty clean. They're mostly um, just little cleanup items. So we're coming before you tonight to, uh, sorry. Look for um, to, to start writing up the resolution, um, should we back now? So nine, just to give you a little background or just to differentiate between the two. Um, nine was the site that we did not need tree clearing waiver for and ten was the site that we did need the tree clearing waiver for. Um, just to differentiate between those two.
Thanks, Scott. Are there any, do you have any questions?
No, for, for, I have nine, but for nine waivers were recommended by Arrow as approved? What was Arrow's conclusion in its review letter for the waivers on nine? Okay, alright.
On that property is, is all of the tree replacement, um, is there enough space for you to utilize the property for that? So on nine, we did not get to the threshold where we need tree replacement, but there is a significant amount of landscaping that's going in nine, uh, especially along the northern border with Bishop Tube site. Um, it's the ten Malon Road site that needs the replacement. But there is a lot of.
Bear with us a few minutes here, this has been problematic recently, continues to be.
So just to orient folks here a little bit, the, so nine is this property on the, the right here, if you can see my cursor. This sort of scalloped line is the tree line for the remaining wooded areas that will not be disturbed. So you can see here it kind of, you know, goes around the areas where there are improvements, whether it's stormwater management, the parking lot, the building, et cetera. Uh, as Scott said, along here is that, I believe what you're referring to as the significant, uh, I'll say buffer uh, between this property and the actual Bishop Tube site. Uh, this is, this, this color here, and I'm colorblind, so I'm not going to pretend to know what color it is. Red, maybe?
It's red.
Thank you, sorry. Uh, these are rights of way and easements, so that, you know, when you put together sort of the parking lots, the buildings, the stormwater and the easements, you can see they're kind of, you know, retaining vegetation where they can and adding it where they can, sort of outside of those areas.
Deb, you gotta come up and talk into the mic.
You said there were waivers, but not tree waivers. I would like to know what the waivers are and I would like to know what you mean by a buffer. Like, and what all this vast landscaping is. If, if, if this is a big part of it, can you explain in a little more detail? Because all that is to me is a black wall.
I guess, I guess I'm confused at your buffer. So, so the landscaping buffer I was talking about is if it's between our site and the site that is residential to the north. So that'll be a combination of shrubs and trees and also a fence line um, for, for that buffer from the residential.
From the Bishop Tube site?
Correct.
So it's a, it's a more of a natural vegetation buffer?
Yes. Trees and shrubs.
Like a wall, like long two oh two, it's not one of those?
No, it's trees and shrubs with the.
Okay.
There's a fence.
And, and were there other waivers?
Waivers? Yes.
So I believe it's the October sixth, twenty-twenty-two waiver letter that we're looking at?
Correct.
Okay. There's a total of one, two, three, four, five, five waivers we can go over on that one.
Yeah, do you want me to walk through each one or?
Yeah, and Al, did you find your review letter? Yeah, okay. And Al can also, the township engineer can also comment as we go through them.
Sure, so.
Can I, can I interrupt just for one second? I'm so sorry, but I'm getting a lot of people complaining that they can't hear when people are talking back there. So I'm going to ask you, please, even stand up here if you have to, okay? Thank you.
So the first waiver is from um, loading ratios that are recommended by the PAD PBNP manual. And what loading ratios are is the total, total amount of contributing area to a stormwater facility. Um, those loading ratios are recommendations, so a lot of times um, those values are exceeded and there's additional precautions that we take to ensure that those facilities function as intended over time since we are increasing um, the, the ratio that's going to that facility. Basically, the ratio of the amount of water going to it, the area going to it, to the infiltration zone. So if you have ten thousand square feet going to a one thousand square foot facility, you would have a ratio of. So it just compares the ratio of area going to the facility to area of the facility. Uh, the second waiver was to submit and have the plans approved as preliminary final. The third waiver is to request that a professional engineer would be allowed to s- sign and seal uh, the landscape plan, which is typically an RLA or a registered landscape protect. Um, the fourth waiver is a waiver um, from the requirement to complete a topographic and existing features survey three hundred feet beyond the track boundary. Uh, there's a lot of publicly available information that we utilized to put these plans together. And the final waiver was to, uh, let's. Uh, just a waiver from the requirement to delineate each tree by type. We completed a tree survey of all trees greater than twelve inches. Um, but the amount of trees on the site, it would have been a significant cost to. Those are all of the. Zach, does, does our ordinance require them to identify the twelve, less, less than twelve inch caliber?
No, so the way the, the planned submission requirements, like in sort of, I'll say, this is going to sound like a way more of an explanation than you need, but we have a section of our code that says, here are all the things you have to submit with a plan. You know, like existing features, a tree survey is required. There may be an environmental impact or traffic study, there's a whole series of things you have to submit. What it calls out is you have to submit a survey showing all trees twelve inches or above, hedgerows, trees lines, et cetera. Anything below twelve is not required to be specifically surveyed and delineated on the plan. So what Scott is talking about is that they've surveyed, um, they've provided a, a sample or a survey of all the trees that are twelve inches or above. They just haven't denoted them to species in this case.
Oh, I apologize.
I apologize, you know what, I was looking at this, there were an additional, two more waivers that I didn't see, the traffic impact and then the cut and fill.
Oh, sorry, yeah, they're on the next page. Yeah, waiver from traffic impact study and then waiver from cuts or fills to exceed uh, five feet.
Zach, if I could just add one more thing. Those numbers of the trees to identify the twenty percent numbers, that chart or those numbers are typically located on the plan, the land development plan?
Yes, so they provided a, they did their sample, their survey that said, here's the total number of trees. And they provided a table that showed, I don't have it right in front of me, but that showed what would be the equivalent of twenty percent or what would be the replacement requirement, is that right, Scott?
Yeah, there is a calculation that, uh, who's your?
Uh, Land, Land Concepts?
Land Concepts. Um, there is a calculation that they had us do that is on the plans that shows the amount of tree removal. Yeah, I think we, we looked and saw and we identified those on that property.
Yeah, and in this case, I'll say too, since it's a large site, similar to what was done, I'll say at the Knickerbocker site, they provided sort of a, a sample area, like, let's call it a hundred by hundred, where they count them all and then it sort of extrapolate that across the site. They used two example areas that were, you know, a reasonable density and then we just extrapolated that.
That's shown on sheet four.
Just a follow-up question.
I'm sorry, and where, where in the package, where is that, that drawing? We've, I've got this, but that doesn't list the chart, doesn't show the numbers.
It's in the actual land development plan.
Okay.
On, on sheet four.
So within your packet, um, there's a memo, there's the waiver request, the review letters, and then after that is the actual plan set?
Any idea what page?
I do not know the packet page number.
By the way, I'm, we have, we have two hundred and fifty pages that are sitting in front of us, okay? And there's, so.
It's starting on page ninety-seven in fact.
Right, right. I'm worried he threw.
So it would be um, page one hundred and one approximately. It's plan sheet four, if you look down the bottom right corner, once you get to the black and white drawings.
Preliminary final land development. Yep, looks like, looks like it's on page ninety-seven if anyone's following or care to follow. Right, ninety-seven? Alright, thanks. Okay, so we.
The beginning of the plan set starts at ninety-seventh, sheet four is page one hundred of the PDF. That shows all the Xs of all the trees.
Yeah, sheet four of nineteen.
Okay. It just took three minutes for it to load online. It was a blank sheet for that pause.
It's a very large file once it's.
Yeah, it's a huge file, it's huge.
Yeah, so the, the calculation we completed was um, based upon their review letter, I believe it was their first review letter that.
Okay. Peter, do you have any questions? Rich?
No.
I'm looking at this, this one? Nine.
Still on nine.
We're on nine. So after, after, if, for anyone who's walked this property knows it, I, I'm trying to be funny here. Is the beer pong table going to be removed?
I'm guessing they'll take it away. You're going to remove the beer pong table?
Really? And Alex, oh my god, yeah.
Sarah Caspar. Where is Little Valley Creek in relation to this? Has anybody sampled it there for PFOS? Because that was the issue that I was raising before. Doesn't matter, doesn't matter. Because that's the problem with PFOS, it's not like anything else, it goes all over the place. So it can be in your soil, it certainly can be in the, in the water, in the Little Valley Creek. And for your own benefit. Sampled, and you can say it's safe there. And that's going to give you a lot more leeway. But, and that's all good, but PFOS just gets there anywhere and that's the problem with it. If you sampled, and Valley Creek has been sampled down farther and that's what Little Valley Creek goes into, and it has PFOS all the way in the Valley Forge National Park. It's in all our streams around here, streams that we call our valued, high valued streams. And once it's in the water, it travels down into your water supply. I can tell you about the two facility, the two army facilities that in contaminated, handed an entire aquifer. But indeed, that's what the state should have required that you do sample that also so you know that the water that you're being supplied, I guess. You can ask them if they've sampled the water. And they're not very reliable either because they go at a higher level, they recommend it. I'm sorry, these are things I know because I've been to the places where these have happened and I follow with webinars and stand up on what is going on. And what is not going on, the state is not advising you as to what you need to know before you. you take steps, and that includes you for your own protection. I'm not saying this because I want you not to build. I have nothing against that, but I want to make sure that whatever and wherever you build, you will be safe. And that's important. And that's why so many people are sick here in Village Way. And you have to acknowledge that, you have to face it. This is the result of, and it's still coming out. PFOS is like radioactive materials. It has a half-life of 80 years. So what happened 80 years ago is still happening. And that's why it's probably unlikely that it's in Little Valley Creek where you're planning to build. But there's no guarantee because it gets into particles, it gets into the air, and then it travels. So you breathe it, you drink it, and you eat it. And it's in our wastes. And these are wastes that we.
Questioning.
Okay, you can, you can go now.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. But the waste that we want to recycle, we can't do that either unless there is a system to filter the PFOS. And that includes, that can be filtered out of the water, the gap. Aqua America, but if not.
Thanks, I'm Kate Stauffer. I am a party to the party because my property, I can see Mount Nine Malin Road. My question, Zach, I think when you first said in the beginning that they were looked at, that this was looked at, has DEP looked at the site? Or has DEP had a part in this? Because I know from someone, and it, that they dumped all over the place when Bishop Tube was in place. So my request to the township and Larry and I, and Larry's with me still, he and I wrote a letter to the DEP asking them to come and before this is done to make sure that there's no toxic, toxicities up on that site. So my question is, is DEP going to look at Nine and 10 Malin Road? Because they did dump stuff up that way when Bishop Tube wasn't.
Have you received a response from DEP?
No.
Okay. So I will say the scope of the analysis we did, the review that we did, was similar to a Phase One that an applicant would do. We reviewed, our consultant rather, reviewed the available documentation through DEP. They reviewed aerial photography for evidence of activity and sort of the usual, you know, protocols for trying to determine whether there could be environmental issues that need to be explored further. Our consultant and the consultants who were hired as part of the previous Phase Ones that were acquired by the banks, from the previous purchasers, did not believe that there was any evidence of activity. So what we're, sort of the position that the township is in, is that we've got three different environmental consultants telling us that there is no anticipated impacts from Bishop Tube on these properties. We have three environmental consultants telling us that there are no anticipated impacts from the surrounding activities. They're, what they actually called out as a more recognized environmental condition or a rec was from some of the, I'll say, the activities to the west, and that's the Sun Oil and Buckeye Terminals, which as I understand have been addressed in the past. So the position that the township is in is that we have nothing from consultants telling us that there is an obvious issue that we need to explore further, whether we need to request the applicant to explore further. As we've discussed in the past with the Bishop, I'll call it Bishop Tube proper, the purview of our land development reviews is limited primarily to our ordinances. We don't have anything that requires them to provide further analysis. We don't have any indications that further analysis is required or, you know, warranted based on the activity that we've seen and the files that are available at DEP. I will say that our consultant who did the analysis also performed extensive file reviews for the Bishop Tube property and the remediation and all the different processes that are at play with that. So we haven't seen anything that points to a major concern that needs to be explored further, and that's sort of the position that we are in. I'll say from a, from a technical review and from a land development perspective.
I don't have any questions on nine.
I do not either.
All right, why don't we move into 10? Ten Malin. We have to.
Do we want to finish the discussion on nine? Or is there something that we want to discuss in the context of both applications? So there'd be, there would be separate applications, separate motions, separate, everything except for engineers at this point, I think?
I think one of the issues is you're going to answer about the plant that you had from the site, which affects both nine and 10.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we can go into 10 because some of the information that was given to me kind of puts the two properties together.
Okay. The way that we sequenced it, nine could be completely built without 10 being proved. So nine is kind of, has been designed to stand on its own. So some of the access improvements will be done with the Nine Malin development, that will already be done. Do you want to go on to the 10 Malin?
Yeah, if you could, Scott, thanks.
Sure. So the 10 Malin site is located directly to the west of the Nine Malin site. And it's a very long skinny property with an existing commercial building on the northern side. There's also a little shed, kind of halfway back through the property that will be removed. Half of the property currently as it exists, kind of half the property is developed either as buildings or parking lot, and the other half, excuse me, the other half of the property still exists as woodland. Apparently, this project is one review behind the Nine Malin project, so the letters for this one are a little, a little less clean than the Nine Malin. Nine Malin's pretty much just cleanup stuff, but 10 has, you know, it's nothing that I don't think we can comply with, but there are additional comments just because of where we're at in the process. The reason that the letters are from so long ago, kind of what happened, just to explain to everybody, we submitted in October, we went to the planning commission meeting in October and got our preliminary recommendation, then we are going to come here, then the township recommended that we go preliminary final. So we went to the November planning commission meeting, got preliminary final approval, and then came back here in December and January. So in that time, we have not revised the plans and resubmitted to the township. I guess it seems like from the previous board meeting that the, the two outstanding items were really the tree removal waiver, which was recommended by the consultants and the planning commission, and then also the environmental concern.
And that certainly has been my concern, is, is that waiver, granting that waiver. I know that in the conditional use, there was reference to the project would result in approximately 15 trees being cut down. I don't know if that was, in retrospect, 15 trees, that's not the case.
Well, I think that, that 15 trees is just in accordance with the ordinance requirements that are greater than 12 inches because we didn't survey the ones that were.
Okay.
So you can't, without surveying them, you know, I guess I could go out and count them, but then you can't.
Right. But unfortunately, in the conditional use, the project would result in approximately 15 trees being cut down. It doesn't say 15 trees that with caliber excess of 12 inches. So that's one area. Second, second area that I have is, is that the.
If I could just say one more thing about the condition, application, the conditional use application was submitted with a previous survey that was done probably 10 or 15 years ago. And then we went out and did our own base plan survey. So those tree numbers might not match exactly what we have on our plan now because there was, that, that plan that we went through with conditional use, I'm sure the note was in my notes, says that the plan was based upon a state.
I'm not seeing that same chart on the land development tree plan exhibit for 10 Malin.
I'm sorry, what?
The tree removal. The tree removal calculation that you saw in the Sheet Four on the Nine Malin, is there, is it on a different sheet in the 10 Malin?
Oh, I believe I have it on the landscaping plan.
Seven of 14.
Yeah, replacement trees. Yeah, so it's 12 trees. Sheet seven of 14. Above the plant characteristics and maintenance notes for the land, last item under the landscaper.
Yeah, so I have it up on the screen here. I don't think it's exactly the same as the other one, but it, it sort of speaks to the, it's kind of a compliance chart. You know, outlines what's, what's required in zoning, what's required in SADO, and just sort of the number of trees that results from each of those requirements.
In the packet, 128.
Yeah, and when, when we do our replacement plantings, we're pretty much putting trees everywhere where I can, outside of right of ways and going on to kind of that existing parking lot area. We're also doing some stormwater management to manage that existing parking lot, which was part of the variance decision.
So just doing a, I looked at this this afternoon to just try to get a ballpark of total trees 12 inches or above versus the number that's removed. It looks like within the confines of just this site, there's about 30 total trees existing, 12 of which, 30 total trees above 12 inches in diameter, 12 of which will be removed. So it puts them sort of in that. I'm not a math guy, but about 40%, let's say. And again, most of these are focused sort of towards the southern end of the site.
Scott, when we, when we walked the property, you were kind enough to put together this to help us.
Yes.
And, and if you could just confirm what appears to be 16 trees on, on 10. I can show you those. Some are hard, hard to read. So I'm counting, you know, these, here.
I think what happened here is, so if you look at the Nine Malin LOD, we come over pretty far to be able to put this road in, and these trees are coming out with this project. So I, I mean, I could walk through that with you a little bit more, you know, on the side if you wanted to, but I believe that that's why there's more shown. These are coming out because I can't build this road and grade this without taking these trees out for this project.
Okay. I guess what, what I, when I, when I looked at this and I counted 16 trees, is that what you're counting?
That is what's shown on here. I would have to double check this, you know, just to make sure one of our old layers isn't on, like maybe these were some of the old trees. Let's see. Could be a revision if, if we have to replace more trees then, you know, if we're going to be resubmitting plans, we would provide adequate tree replacements. If there was additional trees that you guys wanted us to put in, I'm sure the applicant would.
But, but I want to make sure of something because that, you kind of threw me off there. So if, for Nine Malin Road, if you were removing trees on 10 Malin, they're accounted for on 10 Malin, in the 10 Malin plan, not the Nine Malin?
I would have to open my drawing and verify that statement with just these two plans in front of me.
I think what Scott was saying was the opposite, that some of the trees that are shown on 10 Malin appear to be like on the property line or like sort of around the perimeters, maybe coming out because of improvements that are happening on nine Malin.
So you can see on, on Nine Malin, there's trees that are coming down over here on this, so like this stand of trees down here, that's, that's part of the nine project, this one, on the property lines.
Okay.
So I think that's just where the confusion is.
And what's the issue?
We're, he's saying that we're taking out more trees on 10 and we're going to replace. But, I mean, with the amount of tree.
Yeah, I think what was throwing me off was, I thought you were saying on, you were remo, Nine Malin could be built without 10 Malin, but you needed to remove trees on 10 Malin in order to build Nine Malin, to build the road.
That's correct.
That is correct.
That is correct.
So let's just say you decided not to do 10 Malin and you were doing Nine Malin, you're still removing trees from 10 Malin.
That's true.
Okay. That's what was throwing me off.
Different lot.
What's that?
But 10 is a different lot.
But 10 is a different lot, so I wasn't sure how the calculation was being done. But 10 is a different lot, so I wasn't sure how the calculation was being done. Yeah, it was at 10 Malin showing, here's the trees being removed for that development, and nine Malin happens to have some trees on 10. So that's what was.
It's just that they're on the same plan there.
The issue is this, as the driveway comes through the site, to serve this property, I think what Scott was initially saying is that during, if nine were to move ahead of 10, nine could construct this access, which sort of straddles the property line, in order to access this site. 10 could be constructed later. So in order to do that, there are trees near the property line that, you know, it's not real clear exactly where, which line it falls on, but that there would be some on 10 that have to come down to construct that in order to make nine viable. Does that make sense?
I believe, I don't have the land concepts letter in front of me for 10, but I believe we have a clean letter from them besides that waiver request.
Yes, I believe that's what they.
That was the only thing on their letter.
Yeah, so the other ordinance requirements are satisfied. If the waiver or the authorization from the board was granted, there would be no other compliance issues. Because they've met the replacement requirement that was dictated by the 20% and the 12 inches or above requirements, how those kind of fit together.
So our interpretation of our ordinance is you cannot remove more than 20% of the 12-inch trees, right, on the lot, right? But at the same time, even if you, even if you remove up to the 20%, you have to replace every one.
No. I believe it's over 20%.
Yeah, I believe the way it's set up is that you have sort of a threshold, right? So you can clear up to 20%. Anything above and beyond 20% requires replacement on a one-for-one basis, so tree for tree, not inch for inch, caliper for caliper. So anything above that 20% threshold, anything beyond that, you replace one for one. Does that make sense?
Once you go over 20, you need a waiver and you need.
With board authorization.
Yeah, even if he, even if he has the, even if he's on the 30 trees, he's taken 12 of which are being removed, he's putting 12 back in, but he still needs the waiver because he's above the 20. That, yeah, we're reading it the same way. Well, I do think, as Scott had indicated, and Al may weigh in on this, is the 10 Malin is sort of one review behind. It's not as clean as the nine Malin. The letters have more issues, I would say, in the 10.
It's kind of been a tough process because as we've been, you know, we've gone to the board a couple of times now, so during that process, we haven't revised the plans at all because we're just trying to get through and see, you know, if you guys support the waiver, then we'll finish those plans and get everything. So, you know, I guess it's just a chicken and egg kind of thing.
Well, so, to answer your question, the way that Lot 9 was calculated was based upon an average of two areas on Lot 9.
Correct.
So that's what I was saying. If you guys would want additional replacement for those trees on 10, I'm sure the applicant would be happy to.
So if it's 16 on 10, we could replace 16 on 10, even though that's for 9.
Other than cleanup engineering-y type comments that might be in the other part of the letter, that's the issue with this development at the moment. The trees and the waiver and the interaction between 9 and 10.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now I understand. NPDES permits for either, neither has been issued yet.
Neither has been, so 10 has not been submitted yet. We need to do a little bit more testing out there. 9, there's no big comments. I'm actually going to resubmit that probably Friday.
Right.
So that hopefully won't need any more revisions after that.
Right. Okay.
One other concern, one other oddity that I would like to have clarified is when we were out there along the Malin Road, there is a little jug handle that sticks out with two large trees, which we talked about, that it's not shown anywhere in the plan, but you felt as though that in order to construct the road, that one of those two trees would have to be removed. Now, neither tree exists on 9 or 10. So I'm wondering how is that utilizer calculated?
That is 10 Malin. And I think, kind of my thought there was maybe look at sliding that road maybe down a little bit, like extending it the other way instead of up to kind of be able to keep, you know, see. The weird thing was those trees, like there's a huge hill right next to it that goes down to the road. So my guess is they're both going to have to, now, that will be something that we would put.
That would be something.
That we would put into our revision. Because I don't think there's any way to, you know, widen that road there without taking that, at least one of them.
That is on. Aren't those on neither, aren't they on some type of right of way?
I mean, they're on 10 Malin's property. They are within two inches. So there's sewer easement, then also pipeline right of way. So I believe, I would have to check my lines in my CAD file, but it looks like, you know, one of them is in two of them, the other one is just.
So if they're in the easement, you're still counting them in 10, in theory?
So this would be part of 9, but I think that because we have to construct that road for 9. There are the trees.
Yeah, yep, down here. So I'm not, I'm not totally clear. So those two trees are in the calculations in 9 or 10?
They're not included in any calculations.
At this point, none.
Because they were staying.
And now they're going.
Now they're going.
And where do they, again, you're saying that they're on?
So they would be within the 10 Malin Road property. I would have to read how the ordinance is worded because it says 20% of woodlands. Those are just two trees standing there. But I mean, if you wanted replacement for them, I'm sure that they would be, you know, on board with that, but.
Well, one tree I'd say is not, two trees is woodland.
Depends on what your ordinance says, though, right?
I'll step in for a minute, maybe we can move it along, just to clarify a couple of things. Luke Halligreco, I do not represent the purchaser of Lot 9, Jim Edelston's in the audience, but I do represent the owner of Lot 9 and Lot 10, Brian Forcine. And I think what you guys have been going through here, there's no permutation, and somebody in this room, correct me if I'm wrong, there's no permutation of what we've discussed that would negatively impact the Lot 9 approval that you heard earlier. Brian has got, he's got a seller, he's got a landscaper here who thought he'd be building this building over this mild winter, that's been pushed back. He's the Lot 9 owner. So even if one tree here, one tree there, it's Lot 10 that has the relief, you know, the waiver relief. Lot 9 doesn't require any waiver relief other than what, you know, the list that he went through earlier. No tree relief. So if the board is going to do anything tonight on this, I would request if you're, it sounds to me like Lot 10 still needs surgery. Lot 9, I think, has made it out of the recovery room and is ready to move forward, just so these guys can get started with their building. So if there's any requests that we would like to make tonight, is that I understand why you looked at them both together, because that's the way I looked at them when I was, you know, it's just natural, right next to each other, they have shared access. But if we could cut loose Lot 9, and then really, the fundamental question for Brian, since he's the one who's going to be dealing with Lot 10 and the warehouse addition, is as Scott said earlier, if the waiver, the tree waiver is not forthcoming, I think we've satisfied the environmental concerns as much as we possibly can, there's no other records that can be looked at on this property. But if the tree waiver request is going to be problematic and there's no way around that, then that project is dead. I mean, there's no way to manipulate that. And rather than him spend another $50,000 in revising plans and going through NPDES and making all the other accommodations, we're in need-to-know mode. We're more than happy to go back, do the other cleanup items, there was nothing in those letters that was problematic, except I saw an $80,000 traffic impact fee contribution. I don't know if you saw that or not, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, you know, that's all it is. I mean, the immediacy of these two applications is Lot 9, because there's a real live tenant sitting in the audience. He's got to get started and make his business work. On 10, the urgency's not quite as severe. 10 is a different situation. It's a need-to-know mode, or we spinning our wheels, wasting our time, only to spend money on other plan revisions to find out, you know what? That waiver, you guys weren't ever going to get it anyway, no matter what you did. So I hope I summarized what we would like to walk away with tonight. I understand if there's a, because as Scott said, you know, Lot 10 is one iteration behind Lot 9. There's still 30 comments with Lot 10, but one big comment, which will decide whether we address the other 29, if that makes any sense. So direction on Lot 10, recommendation or authorization for approval on Lot 9 is what we'd really like to walk away with tonight. Thanks.
Hi, Kate Stoff of Fonstock Road. Everything was presented as one when it was first presented, and I, maybe that was the confusion that we had, is that it was presented 9 and 10 together. And then what you had just brought up is that if they do work on 9, trees from 10 have to be removed in order for 9. So they do, from my perspective, until that's solved, you can't get to 9 until we decide what trees have to be removed or not removed. And I will still go back to the fact that I still think the DEP needs to take a look Something else that slipped my mind is that you were asking about Environmental Advisory Board people to get on that board. They are experts, and what I've noticed about not only the township, and not you guys personally, or Chester, just Chester County Advisory Board for the environment, is that unfortunately, they're just that. And they had had recommendations over the years that we did not listen to, and we wouldn't be in this situation if we, and as we puzzle over this, I'm wondering if your puzzlement should go to the experts on the Environmental Advisory Board before you make a decision.
To address your concerns, Kate, the, the due diligence has been done by the land owner, the property owner, and the township through its contracting BSI to look over the studies. What we cannot further do is request, put that upon the property owner to do further than what they've done. They've done their due diligence. There's, there is no need to pursue further investigations. So, I mean, unless DEP were to drop from the sky and say they absolutely need to test those two sites, there is absolutely no precedence for them to do that because there's no reason ahead of that. Although I share your concerns, there is no, there's no legal footing to pursue it, though. I absolutely share your concerns, but there's nothing that can be done in that regard.
Are you okay making a motion for 9?
For 9, yeah.
And then deny 10. Well, let's make, let's make it one at a time.
Yes.
All right. So we are, we are in agreement, we'll, we'll go forth this way, we'll give you a decision here, vote on 10. I'm sorry, 9. Don't ever do two together.
Believe me, I won't. It also wasn't my idea.
You'll live longer, and the board will live longer.
Zach, I don't have my plans anymore. I lost them. They must be. This is. Yeah, no, because they would have caught that in their comment letter, because I did the calculation based on exactly how they told me to.
They reviewed it and cleared it.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the solicitor to draft a resolution for the preliminary final land development for the application for 9 Malin Road.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Rich or Peter, do you want to call one?
On 10, after discussion, and now that we know all the facts, we're, the consensus is inclined not to grant the waiver. So to, you know, go back to whatever you have to look at on 10 Malin and come up with a resolution, if you're so inclined.
So, just to, raise my hand in real life, not just on Zoom. So just a, I guess, an administrative matter on 10, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, if you were to go back to, back to the drawing board to do further analysis, we would need an extension to carry it forward to a future meeting. If you do not.
All right, so the next item on the agenda, Section C, is related to extensions of time. There's two listed on this version of the agenda. The first is for Scholdy's hernia repair. They've offered an extension until April 30th in order to resolve some of the remaining stormwater items, so they intend to be back before you next month. The next is 280 Great Valley Parkway, that's a project by Jansen. Similarly, they are cleaning up the plans following a discussion with the Planning Commission meeting this past month. They've offered an extension to April 30th and will likely be back for the March meeting. And then, I think we need to potentially make a motion, or someone can weigh in administratively or procedurally here, we have two other extensions for the two Malon Road projects we were just discussed. They had offered extensions to March 31st in order for the board to render its decision. One would be in a position to vote on, the 9 project would be on a position to vote on at the next month's meeting, and 10 will await their determination based on the feedback tonight. We have all four extension letters in hand and packaged.
I need to reverse to clarify something here.
Okay.
You know, I don't know if Lou needs to come back in here or not. Yes?
I think Rich just said, Rich just said they're not inclined to grant it. We never made a motion.
No, we never made a motion to deny it.
We did not make a motion to deny it.
We need to make a motion. Through all of this administratively, we've realized something we missed, and we just want you to understand it. Is, Rich, will you make the motion?
Yeah, and I said we're inclined not to grant it, so we requested that we need to make a formal motion to deny the waiver requested for Lot 10 for...
As long as you're not denying the plan for Lot 10, because we may, that's what we're talking about now, is there a way that we can keep the plan alive? We understand the waiver, make a motion, deny the waiver, do whatever you have to do.
Right, that's what we're...
But keep that plan out there until you get a letter from me, either withdrawing it or amending it.
Right, and that's fine.
We understand that the, that's all the direction we're looking for tonight.
Sure, okay.
Helps us go forward with planning on the site. But thanks for splitting the baby, letting those guys at least get on their way.
Okay.
Thank you. So, Peter, will you second that motion?
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we can go to the extensions.
But I would, I would still ask for the agenda to be modified, to add those two extensions on for 9 and 10 Malon Road, just because you never know, something always happens. So I'd ask for that motion. We just received them recently, which is why it didn't make it onto the agenda.
Sure. I agree. I intend to do that. So I'll make a motion to extend, let's see, LD 8, 2022, 12, 2022, 12, 2021, and 2, 2022. The first two extensions to April 30th, 2023. The second two extensions to March 31st, 2023.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I guess I didn't make myself clear. Because the bottom two, LD 12, 2021, and LD 02, 2022, were not on the published agenda, because Donna didn't have them in time, we have to make a motion to amend the agenda to add those two. Yes.
All right, I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to add items 7C, 3, and 4 for LD 12, 2021, and LD 2, 2022.
Do you have a second?
I will second that amendment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Amended to it.
Thank you.
Board Secretary, did we vote on the extensions?
Yes.
We did?
Who's on first?
Okay. I'm sorry, ratify the advertising for public hearing.
I'm going to take this one. There were two items and two properties that we wanted to rezone, and you'll see on the agenda, 164 Conestoga from Open Space to PO, and 800 Sweetsford Road from R2 to OS. The 800 Sweetsford Road is township-owned property, and we wanted to put that in OS Open Space rather than R2. It was a leftover from the development next door, and it's just a cleanup item. In addition, the 164 is also a cleanup item. For whatever reason, it, I think it was a mistake that it got accidentally rezoned to Open Space, which is normally what township property is zoned. So we were zoning, the request is to zone it back to professional office. This is just the authorization for the advertising. The hearing would be in March. This is a legislative decision, so you can decide in March that you don't want to do this. You can decide one, both, either, whatever you want. You're not bound by the fact that we advertise and send out the notice. You could still say, we don't want to do this, because it is a legislative decision.
Make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to advertise for a public hearing on March 8th, 2023, relating to zoning map amendments for the following properties, 164 Conestoga Road and 800 Sweetsford Road. The 164 Conestoga Road being rezoned from Open Space to professional office, and the 800 Sweetsford Road being changed from R2 to Open Space.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. And, public comments? Question?
Marty Motts, Lab Road. I'd like to discuss for a moment property 164. There are a number of events surrounding that property. One is that the property owner is requesting a zoning change. Second, the township is conducting environmental assessment on that. I was wondering if the board could take a moment and explain or put in context what is taking place with the property. A lot of questions are arising, you know, why the zoning change, particularly in that that property is directly adjacent to the existing US 202 billboard. A lot of concern when that billboard went up. Now we're taking, directly adjacent to a property and putting it in the professional office category where another billboard could be allowed. So possibly you could put things in context for the public here.
So, the landowner approached the township and suggested that he would be willing to convey those properties to the township. As part of that conversation, it was made mention that, at some point along the way, Marty, I think you were part of the zoning ordinance task force a number of years ago.
Right, way back.
It was rezoned from an existing commercial zoning district to open space. I'm not aware of other privately owned properties that were or are zoned open space. The comment made at the time was, look, I don't know why it got rezoned to professional office, but my request would be that the township, or rezoned to open space, my request would be that the township return it to a commercial use. Separately from that, the township, as part of our due diligence of any offer to convey the property to the township, we've done environmental testing. So on one month, it was an authorization to perform a Phase 1. The subsequent month, it was an authorization to perform a Phase 2, which included some soil sampling. So the way I have viewed this all along is that there's an opportunity for the township to acquire a piece of property. Separately, there is an issue regarding the zoning of a property from a commercial use to one that is, I would say, less productive, one that doesn't allow them to use the property in as many fashions as it would if it was zoned commercially. So to me, there's two separate issues that overlap. One is that the zoning map should be updated to rezone this back to a commercial use, as requested by the owner. The separate is this opportunity for the township to take ownership of it, pending our own due diligence for environmental. I think that was your question, right? Why are there two?
Well, thank you. However, I'm not sure I agree with the logic here that the state made when that property was rezoned open space. I think that was intentional at the time, and the reality is, too, that property's been zoned as open space for years now, you know, many years. So it was a mistake, why wasn't it identified before now?
Well, I've been pointing out some other ones that I think, like cleanup items like this 800 Sweetsford Road that I said should be, you know, put back into open space because it's owned by the township. We are finding ones that we believe should be switched.
Okay, but again, I mean, that doesn't quite, to me anyway, explain why somebody's representing now that was a mistake. I think it was intentional at the time.
Well, it would be odd to take a property that's not township property and zone it open space.
Yeah.
What was that? I'm sorry.
I can't speak to whether it was a mistake or not. The concern is that, and again, I don't want to overstep my bounds, but when you take a commercial property and you zone it to something that is not commercial and therefore you can't use it in as many ways, you've essentially taken property value or rights from that owner. The concern is that whether that was intentional or not at the time when the rezoning was done in 2007, I believe, was the last comprehensive rezoning, there's an issue about property rights that needs to be addressed. So, again, we've tried to look at these separately. It was brought to our attention by the property owner. I don't think he had any intention to use the property in the past couple of years, but the fact remains that there is a property that's zoned, at least from my perspective, not having participated in the last zoning process, inappropriately.
Okay, but again, I would stress the fact that that property owner had every opportunity to raise this issue years before this.
He did, and he's now raised it, and we are trying to address that issue that he's raised.
Seems odd, I'm not going to belabor that point right now. The other issue is if it is zoned to professional office. Just by way of review, township took approximately 20 acres of its open space land to extend the professional office district of 401, so the billboard could be built within a professional office district. Considerable effort was placed into developing a, I believe it was called Covenant, that could not be changed, where that property, acres, would never be used as, it would always be used as open space, and no other billboards built within it. So I throw this out to the board, that to the extent that zoning on that property were to change, that in considering that that property, even though the township may own it, the extension of this professional office district, that a similar covenant would be put in place, say that's always going to be used as open space.
Yeah, so the property owner has volunteered to do that. When this was originally raised months ago, was, the topic was originally broached, they had agreed to record such a covenant, so we will remind them of that, and I think, I don't see any reason why they wouldn't agree to do that, if the concern is specifically related to off-premises signs.
And the only other thing is, Zach, you and I briefly discussed this afternoon, that, I'm like losing my train of thought here, is approaching a situation sequentially that, I don't know if the township would get itself in some difficulty if it approved a zoning change first, and your environmental assessment falls through and comes up negative. And then the property owner's sitting there with a piece of property, this professional office, but he's not going to dedicate it to the township.
And again, this is just the authorizing of the advertising. The hearing is scheduled for March 8th, doesn't mean the hearing will happen that date. We've continued many hearings in the past. So, yeah, it really, it's really just the beginning, is the authorizing. And like I said, it's a legislative decision, they could decide on March 8th, we're not doing it.
I'm just throwing it out there as...
Yep, understood.
...your understanding. The only other final comment would be that it deals with, many residents aren't aware of what's going. The question arises is how are adjacent property owners going to be notified? Whether they're for it or against, I don't know. Just raising the point of how they're going to be notified, because when you look at that piece of property, which I did, the property to the north and the other side, Toe 2, is owned by the applicant, Nickelbacher lands. The property to the west is owned by the township, and you're all aware. Well, it's a property to the east is owned by a vacant landowner who lives in Hawthorne. And the property to the south, directly across 401, is owned by an affiliated party, Vino Holdings. So it's like, my understanding and notification is all the surrounding property owners are basically know what's going on. But there is a development across 401, I think it's called Chester Valley, something. I think you should take into consideration maybe adjacent developments like one up 401, Chester Valley Knoll.
Just where I know.
Yeah. And there's one across...
Lightfield Drive.
Right. You may want to take into account maybe extending your traditional circle notification.
We were actually, Brittany and I were speaking about that. We were thinking 250 feet for both of them. Rich, I know you're looking at a map there. Would that cover what?
250 feet taken out from there, which would look, it's just a drawword, and you think towards this point, there. Yes.
It would?
250 feet across is Route 401, on to Chester Valley Knoll. Parcel 7122, 7121, and that's it, not 7120, but 121 and 22, that'll bound it, the whole neighborhood will know.
Okay, thank you for consideration.
Thanks, Marty.
So if that's acceptable to the board, Brittany was going to do the 250 feet?
Sure.
Okay.
That's fine.
I'd like to make a motion to...
basically know what's going on. But there is a development across 401 on, I think it's called Chester Valley, something. I think you should take into consideration maybe adjacent developments like on 401, Chester Valley Knoll.
That's where I know.
Yeah. And there's one across.
Lightfield Drive.
Right. You may want to take into account maybe extending your traditional circle notification.
We were actually, Brittany and I were speaking about that. We were thinking 250 feet for both of them. Rich, I know you're looking at a map there. Would that cover what?
Two hundred and fifty feet taken out from there, which sure looks, it's just a road, and you think towards this point, there. Yes.
It would.
Two hundred and fifty feet across is Route 401 on Chester Valley Knoll, parcel 7122, 7121, and that's it, not 7120, but 121 and 22, that'll bound it, the whole neighborhood will know.
Okay, thank you for consideration.
Thanks, Marty.
So if that's acceptable to the board, Brittany was going to do the 250 feet?
Sure.
Okay.
That's fine.
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to, I did make a motion. I already did that, I'm sorry, I'm kidding. I'm sorry, it's late.
Pretty vote on or just a comment?
We just had late comment, sorry.
Yeah, it was a late comment.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so this is a request for final release of financial security for the Great Valley Crossing community on Church Road. This is a Toll development. There are funds remaining on their bond, I guess you could say. It's not money that we hold at the township, it's not cash. But the remaining balance of that is primarily contingency. At the last board meeting, the members of the HOA requested the township table the release so that we could review, or so that they could and that we could review the transition study that the HOA had provided to the township and to Toll. We've done that, we've reviewed it. We do not feel that there are major issues remaining that would impact the security that we're holding. We scheduled a site visit with the HOA and discussed the land development process, the financial security that we hold, the transition process, and all the other sort of pieces that go into this. As I understand it, that meeting that they understood, they were no longer requesting us to withhold this money. So I think that the township is in a position to authorize this release.
Any public comments, Donna? Seeing none.
Do you like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the final release of financial security for Great Valley Crossing, amount of $285,000, $30 and 23 cents.
No second?
No second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Part and parcel to our review and trying to follow some of the previous, previous meetings pertaining to what the Route 30 corridor master plan may look like that was begun in 2018 and all of, all of the meetings that were associated with that over that period of time and the conclusions. We have, we have collectively talked internally about what we would like to see along the corridor. We began having public meetings last summer that was, unfortunately, the only person that attended at the time was also here tonight, Lou Caligreco. But part and parcel to that, we are, we would like to have a presentation from Tom Bentley pertaining to a proposal. He has, he has talked to us about pertaining to 310 Lancaster Avenue. And if, Tom, thank you for your, your patience in this, sticking around on this meeting.
You guys are rock stars, I'll tell you what. Amazing. Thank you for flipping me in here tonight, I really appreciate it. I'll, I'll make it as quick as I can, I know it's late. You know, my name's Tom Bentley, I have a company called Bentley Homes. We've been around for a long time, 49 years this year, building in Chester and Delaware County. We, we do custom, we do apartments, we do townhouses, where we, we build all kinds of different stuff. So I bought this property a year ago. I actually will tell you that I thought it was zoned for apartments. The seller thought it was zoned for apartments, my planner thought it was zoned for apartments. We, we hired Lou and we found out it was not zoned for apartments. So what we did is we, we studied the corridor plan, which really, for being done in 2018, I mean, I think it really was a good, a good summary of the situation. And in keeping, and looking at the corridor plan, I felt that there was definitely an opening for more apartment identity use on Route 30. And I know that one of the, one of the objectives of the corridor plan was to try out the apartments at the western end of the corridor, and that was GMH's property, and, and that went very well, and I think it's been, you know, well received and certainly has been very successful. So I brought the executive summary with me, and I'll just read the, the one key paragraph. Key issues, the properties along Route 30 corridor are a peculiar mix of old and new, pristine and unkempt, planned and improvised. The overall effect is often described as a hodgepodge by community members. Despite uses, an auto-oriented environment, lack of street trees and landscaping, parking lots that seemingly spill into the roadway, and an abundance of signage all contribute to a lackluster appearance that is of great concern to residents and business owners. From a land use perspective, key issues fall into three broad categories: vitality and viability, lack of community identity, and overall appearance. It's our belief, and I think it was the, the creators of the corridor study, that, you know, more rooftops, more residents living in the Route 30 corridor would, would revitalize the area. And so we decided to, you know, we bought the property, we decided we would keep on pursuing it, and we had a couple of meetings with staff. And, you know, we studied the guidelines and, you know, we actually implemented a couple of the guidelines that were the addendum to this. We did, we moved the building to the front, we have a 30-foot setback that's, that's greenery, we have a sidewalk, we have a bike lane. We actually, one of the things in the, the guidelines was to can't, to step the, if it's over three stories, to step the fourth story back. We also incorporated that in our plans. So we think, we think having apartments in this site really lives up to what the master plan was all about. I, I would like to mention too that, you know, I hate to date myself, but I've been around for a number of years, and I remember going into Phoenixville when it was all empty. I mean, there was nothing there. There was a few old dress shops, you know, a couple like bars that were pretty crappy. And they built that apartment building there, and, you know, the town has, has revitalized. I mean, it's on fire. I mean, I don't know if any of you have been up there during the summer when they close the street, but it's, it's rocking. I mean, it's like unbelievable. And, and there's been more apartments and more residential growth, but it was the first apartment building that they built there that really set the tone and got things going. And it was bringing people into a, into a downtown kind of location and creating, you know, some, some balance in a town center. Malvern, Malvern, same situation. Malvern was like pretty dead, and my partners, who I would be using on this project, actually developed the east side flats there. And that whole end of the township, or the borough picked up, there's some good restaurants, a lot of the stores that were empty are now filled. I think all the stores are filled. So we think that can happen in the corridor. Our vision, can you put up the elevation? Our vision is basically to create a historic look, something that has some architectural integrity, not, not something that is like these big stripes of color that say, I'm contemporary and I'm modern. My, my vision is, is a historic mill that was, you know, there for 100 years and was converted into lofts. And I think it would, I, to me, this is like a landmark architectural vision.
Tom, can I just, just clarify, I don't know if you mentioned it, it's been a long night, but, but this location is the current site for the Clues boat?
Oh, yeah, thank you, I'm sorry.
Okay, I, I'm not sure we touched upon that.
I knew you guys knew that, I'm sorry. The TV all dinged down.
That's okay, that's okay.
Yeah. It's 310 Lancaster Avenue, it's the old Clues and Strawbridge property. And the, our vision is, and, you know, we, we spent a lot of time talking about this, and we kind of knew we would maintain the historic house. And so the concept was basically, well, let's maintain the historic house and, and have something that looks historic right next to it. And I think, you know, my architect has done an incredible job here. That house is, is rotting away right now. It's kind of falling apart, and it's got vines growing through it, and it's pretty bad. Combined with what I think is beautiful architecture, the site that exists there right now has got to be the worst eyesore on Route 30. It is, you know, just absolutely, it's strange. I mean, you drive by it and you're, you're kind of wondering, what is it? What, what is going on here? What are those levels? Well, those used to be a parking lot for a car dealership, which was its last use. They sold Saabs there. And when, when Saab went out of business, they went to boats, and so Clues and Strawbridge. And, and the guy that owns it right now, he's, he wants to move his boat business someplace else and sell the property. Interestingly enough, this is my opinion, of course, I, I, not only do I think it's one of the worst-looking sites on Route 30, I think it's probably the least developable site on Route 30. Now, you have a huge hill, it's solid rock under there. This is, this is what developers today get, they get the last piece of property that nobody wants to build on. It is, you couldn't build a shopping center there, you couldn't get enough mass of, of capital that would support the shopping center to do the, the excavation and the work that's needed to be done there. We figured that between the, the rock and the excavation, retaining walls, and the demo, there's probably a million dollars' worth of work to be done there on top of the, the cost of the property. So in my opinion, there's only three uses that this property can be. It can remain as it is, it can be a car dealership or a boat dealership, which it is right now, or it can be an apartment building. I don't think it can be retail, retail is, is fading, office is fading, both those uses, you guys read the papers, you know, those uses have declined. We get everything in brown boxes with a smile on it now. You know, nothing, nobody goes to the store and buys anything, nobody goes to work. I mean, my office building is, is, you know, 40% empty. And so there's no, there's no other use that I can see for that property. The, I'll talk about something good now. The, you know, we would do a fiscal impact study, but I've done these many times before. The apartments would be a huge physical plus to the township. The tax revenue, we would have low student use, per, per, per family, per people living there. The studies indicate, you know, one school-aged child per 20 units, but our actual numbers from apartments we've built is, is far lower than that. We're like one, one student per 30 or 40 apartment units, so we, we could have like six students in the whole, and I know that's a concern for the school board. And in addition to that, there would be no demand on services. The, you know, the township would really not have to do anything to, to plow our roads or to do anything at all, it would just be positive. So am I going quick enough? Good? Okay. I see that, so, so, so what's, what, the wins for the township, real quick. Eyesore eliminated, revitalization of Route 30, historic restoration of something that's listed in your historic register of that building, fiscally positive, low impact to the schools, and landmark architecture. I mean, I think this would be a really stunning building, and it would look like it's been there for quite a period of time. My presentation.
I'll, I'll ask the question that everyone would probably raises. How many, how many units are you proposing?
240.
240.
Really, the scale for doing apartment buildings today with what you have to pay for managers and services, under like 225, it gets kind of tough. At 200, you're, you're not really doing it. This site with its improvements with the rock, the, all the, all the demolition and grading and stuff, we pretty much, I mean, we might get a little, I don't think we can get any more. I mean, I think the maximum, 243, I think, what the maximum, one quarter and a half acres or something like that. Apartments, yeah.
And do you have a, a rough makeup of one-bedroom, two-bedroom studios?
Yes, we do. So the, well, we, we call one-bedrooms studios, same thing. So one-bedrooms would be about 55% and two-bedrooms would be 45%. And we may have, you know, less or more depending on what our marketing is, you know, when we get down to it. No three-bedrooms, so.
I attended the planning commission presentation, and I recall it was favorably received. There was only one member who did not like this use on Route 30. I won't mention his name, but.
Yeah, well, his main, one of his main concerns was the schoolchildren too, and I think Zach, he asked you for data on how many kids were at the, the yards, and I think it's like, you know, 20 kids or?
You'll, you'll be, you'll be happy, as part of the study and what we're looking at for, for Route 30, this calculator likes, our thing likes to go down, it was only 14 at the yards that were attending Great Valley Schools.
Okay, so, yeah.
And I can't recall, was it 100 and?
225.
They have 225 units?
Yeah, give it.
I think they have a little more, I wasn't sure, but.
Well, it's, I know it's not 250, I know it's not 200.
All right.
The, I, one question, the facade of this is the same level back from 30 as the yards.
No, the yards has a parking lot in front of it, and if you look at the, the addendum, which is the, we actually read all this stuff very carefully. The design guideline that is on your website and that you spent all the money for back in 218, you know, the, the planner who did this is a very well-known planner, Tom Comit. He, he prefers the parking in the back and the buildings up front, and that's what we, that's what we.
But there's still.
So it's 30 feet back from the right-of-way.
Still with 30 feet back from the right-of-way, there's still enough room for the, the bike if it turns out to be that, the shoulder, the sidewalk.
The bike and the, and the sidewalk is in the right-of-way. So there's 30 feet clear from any kind of pedestrian traffic in front of the building. And we would do that in green. We have a, a site plan too that Zach has, goes the other way. Now, this is, this has changed slightly. The, the parking garage moved to the right and the apartments flip-flopped a little bit. But you can see in the front there, that would all be heavily landscaped along the front, and we were going to do side, you know, the sidewalk that you require and the bike path you require in the right-of-way, and expanded right-of-way. And then we were going to, you know, have some, some little indents where we could have some park benches, a little bit of a place to, a, a green place. I mean, that's really, what this talks about is humanizing, I mean, there's some really pretty pictures in here where the artist kind of dolled it up and had, you know, people out riding and playing in front of all these commercial buildings. I don't know what, if it's going to actually happen, but this would, the front of this would be extremely well landscaped and green. It'd be a lawn, it'd be a trail, benches also.
Kind of amenities, the usual these days.
Yes, well, we'd like to think that we do a better job than everybody else, but.
Better than.
There would be a gym, there would be a common area, swimming pool, dog run. Dog runs. runs, you can't believe how, you have to have a dog run. I mean, if you don't have a dog run, you know, they're not going to go.
Any thoughts on what historic home could be, is what usage it would be?
You know, I'd love to see a little coffee shop there, you know? Something that's not Starbucks, something that's old and funky. I mean, if you look, if you drive through Phoenixville and look at what they've done there, there's no McDonald's. There's no, I mean, there maybe is someplace on the outskirts, but I mean, when you go down the main drag, all old buildings that have been revitalized and great restaurants, great coffee shops. You know, the inside of that, the outside has fallen apart, but the inside is fairly solid. I think I presented that to the planning. And it's, I don't know, I don't know what it would be. You know, I'd like to rent it, of course. Maybe the township wants to rent.
Mr. Bentley, do you mind if I ask, what price range are you, are these going to be going for? Do you have that target?
Yeah, the studios, you know, it's a, trying to bring a studio in at $1,500 and all the way up. Two-bedroom would be $2,400, probably. And 1800. But for township, police officers.
Don't say it, whatever you do, please.
No, we think it's a great location. We really do. And I mean, it's, I just think it's, it's an eyesore right now. And I'm excited about it. If I can get you excited.
Was a draft ordinance amendment prepared yet by anybody, whether it's Tom Cometa or Lou or you or...
I'll let Lou, Lou present that. Yeah, we did.
Because I'm sure that would have to incorporate architectural, which we have not really done ever. But to make sure that the architectural is this, we would have to build it into the ordinance, I think.
Yeah. Good point, Rich. With the, we've been going back and forth. We submitted essentially the same language that was in the GMH ordinance. We just extended the map over this property. And when Zach and Tom Cometa got it, they thought that there was embellishment of the GMH ordinance. And I think Bernadette, you were involved in that, too, where additional guidelines, design guidelines were added. So, we saw everything that Tom and the staff had added. We were fine with it. It makes that project buildable. But it is probably 70 more percent detail than was in the original GMH ordinance. So, we're procedurally, we're ready to go. I mean, we've, we've gone the informal route here of trying to get the constituencies plugged in and understanding what we're doing. Planning commission was good with it, but for one. I think staff is good with it, that we're presenting to the board. And if the message here tonight is proceed, then we intend to start the official process of, you know, filing officially. I guess, I guess I probably did file officially, but it's probably worthless now, since we've changed it. But we would file, go back to the planning commission, get official recommendation, send it to the county, get their recommendation, and then have a public hearing, hopefully this spring.
I guess we'd also have to work through the issue of spot zoning to make sure that this is not subject to, you know, attack somehow. We need to get educated on that a little bit.
Yeah. I think Zach had presented two, two options. One was for a larger section. There was an option one and an option two. And it encompassed about 10 or 12 properties. I don't know, you probably don't have that on your computer right now. Yeah, that was, that was what everybody felt was the best way to go about that.
Tom, what is a, what is a second choice besides apartment complex on this property that you're looking at?
I'm kind of committed to this, but I would, I would probably sell it to, I did have two car dealerships that wanted to buy it from me. It's actually, as far as total cost for a car dealership, I mean, there's an existing showroom that's right on Route 30. And it's got concrete floors on the first and second floor. There's garage bays. The lot is staggered up the hill. So, I mean, the easiest use, that's why I said, I think there's only three uses. I think that it's what it is now, which is a boat shop. It's a car dealership, or it's apartments. I don't, I can't see it being retail, commercial. I can't see it being anything else. It's just too expensive. We did have two, well, there was three car dealerships circling, but two got in contact with us. Probably know one of them. Anyway, you know, I'm excited about the project. I mean, I've been working on it for a year. And, you know, when I read the, when I read the whole Carter study, it was just, I just felt, this is, this is exactly what the Carter study is all about. And they actually had talked about another place that could be, you know, maybe a mixed use, but I understand that now is old. So, there's, you're kind of running out of places that, I mean, you need a, you need a piece of property for the zoning. It has to be over four and under six or, that I don't know exactly. But, you know, you have a lot of small properties.
Yeah, yeah. That's what GMH ran into that problem.
Okay.
Okay. Listen, thank you for presenting. Donna, any comments from anyone? I know it's late for people, but, any comments from the public? Deb, are you awake?
Yeah, I'm awake, other than restaurants. Restaurants are what's great. I've lived here all my life. Westchester, too. Westchester, too.
There's four restaurants right across the street from our property at the, at shopping center that Anderson owns, the name of it.
Right.
But they would, I talked to the owner, and he's, he would love to see us build apartments.
Okay, thank you.
And so, Scott, one of my understandings is, is the petition to rezoom, but also the MF30 overlay text amendment. So, they would have to come at the same time.
Yeah, so, the thought for tonight was just to get a, to have a conversation about the project, get some feedback. The map amendment, text amendment would need to be sorted out. I think there's a couple of points that were made here tonight. But I feel like the text, as Lou said, was kind of bolstered a bit. We can talk about those other pieces, but wanted to make sure that Tom had the ability to get some feedback to get in front of you, see if there was support for going forward. If there's issues that need to be resolved, we know what they are and we can work on them. Or not, as the case may be.
Right, exactly. I was hoping that we'd have some, some feedback from residents, but maybe that'll filter in.
The biggest thing that has me concerned is that hill. And these pictures are beautiful, and they do not reflect the fact that that, you could ski down that hill. If Route 30 wasn't down there, you could put, you could put snow skis on and have a run with it. Every single project that has come through here since I've been coming here six, seven, I don't know, 100 years now, there's an issue with steep slope. That's a really dangerous situation in this township. We've thought about it. We've fought for it. And there's so little land left, this is what's left. So, if stuff can be done without cutting into this deep slope, that's fine. But I can't really tell that from these beautiful pictures, you know? I can't afford to live in places. But it is beautiful.
I'll be the quickest.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you want to tell Lou?
The, for the zoning hearing board for February, earlier this evening, I got a notification from the applicant for 14 East Lancaster, that he's asking for another extension to address concerns that have been brought up to him from the township. So, that'll be off on matters. For code updates, we have an update on the Pioneer Gas Station at 30 in Plainbrook. On Friday at 11:30, they're having a meeting with the DEP, which at that time, they believe they're going to give them the green light to finally rehab and restore the grounds there. The owners are very eager to get the repairs done and get the place opened back up.
At one point, you thought you were going to try to attend that meeting with...
I am.
I'm still on the Bentley thing. I'm still on the Bentley. Just with Mr. Bentley here, I just want to be clear. My vision of that property is not apartments. It's the status quo of potential dealership, commercial use. That's my personal vision of 30. And hopefully to see that come to, come to pass with the Ray's grant being put forward and the three lanes being turned into five.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you're saying.
Your vision of apartments is, is not what I envisioned Route 30 to be.
Okay.
In that property.
Okay.
Just a full disclosure.
Okay.
Just a difference of opinion. It's nothing personal.
All right.
That's all.
And part of the concern is to make sure that whatever goes over 30 wherever, still will allow the five lanes that are depicted on the Ray's grant cartoon.
I guess correct in that sense. My vision of Route 30 is to remain a commercial corridor that it's with a very limited residential. That's my personal vision. It's in no way a poor reflection upon Mr. Bentley. I just, I didn't fully agree with the corridor 30 study when it was put out. I didn't think, I don't think that Route 30 will ever be a main street like Phoenixville, Wayne, Bryn Mawr, fill in the blank. It just doesn't have the connectivity for through roads that all those streets have. And for that reason, just by the very limited ability of cross streets with the power lines, railroad tracks and such, the best-case scenario for Route 30, in my vision, or my opinion, is that we get the five lanes from Malin to the Home Depot. I guess that'd be Phoenixville Pike. And we just hopefully get more and better businesses on that corridor.
Yeah.
In no way a poor reflection upon your developments there.
I would just add that if it stays what it is right now, the building that's there is in the way of the five lanes.
Right.
You can't, you can't have five lanes there.
Right.
Because it won't fit. The cars that park there now back out on the Route 30. So, that building's probably, you're, 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 the Route 30, the Carter study envisions an 83-foot right-of-way. It incorporates all those lanes, plus bike path, plus sidewalk. You would be into the middle of the old Saab dealership to get that. And then, you wouldn't be able to enact the funds from a buyer of that property because there would be no, you know, conditional use. If I go through conditional use, you're going to tell me what you want, and I'm going to probably do it. So, just the way it developed.
I thought the Ray's grant covered area was from church out to further westbound, not Ma, not Malin.
Church to Plainbrook, but there's existing five lanes essentially from Malin to...
So, the Ray's grant...
Peter, was your point that, sorry, go.
The Ray's grant area includes this portion of Route 30? No, I didn't think so.
This is beyond the...
That's the other, one other plus that I thought some development here is we can tell our dear government, look, we're not just relying on your money. We're making changes to facilitate on our own another part of Route 30. So, for what it's worth.
Rich, just to be clear, I'm only referring to the Route 30 corridor study, which had the five lanes going from Malin.
The whole, the study had the whole...
I understand the grant, the limit of the Ray's grant.
Okay, I understand. Yeah, yeah.
Am I dismissed? You're dismissed. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Updates regarding current, which, John, you just jumped in there. Public comments?
Questions?
We're not on public comments here.
Okay.
I was wondering where we stood on the consultants' review of the latest DEP proposal. And will they be like presenting their findings to us the very nice way they did last time?
Yeah, I'll have to check to see where they stand. I think they're either done or very close to done with their review. And yes, there will be a public meeting.
I, I thought that, but I thought that was mentioned, but I'm like a little foggy-brained right now.
Understood.
To, have we heard anything about a date and a format from DEP?
I've had discussions with, his name's Rob Fogel. He's their government liaison. Boy, a couple of weeks ago, I expressed the concern of the board and of the residents that the DEP hold a meeting and make it a meeting format, not a hearing format. He told me they're struggling to find a place and they're down a staff person. But he said he would move it up on his list of things to do, and he would take the feedback, which he described as very important, the feedback being, I strongly urge them to allow questions and answers and comments and not limit people as they did before. But that, it's not Mr. Fogel's decision, but that message was communicated to the DEP.
Thank you. Thank you. And just one other, it's not a question because we don't have any date yet, but I certainly hope that we can at least, even if it's informally, even if it's part of these very late-night meetings, meet with the consultants before the DEP meeting. Because I found that one of the more helpful things, I mean, I've listened to a lot of people, but they were very plain-spoken, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we'll be able to do that. But again, I'll have to check with BSTI to see where they stand. But I think we're moving faster than the DEP. It's not saying much.
Much.
Right. Yes, thank you.
Keith, are we done?
Yep. Keith, go ahead.
Yep. Keith Walsh, Great Valley Community Organization. I think just about everybody left in the room knows who I am. I've been here a lot through the years. Real quick update. We're real excited. The, the building, the community center down on Backton Hill Road is moving forward, the actual pre-engineer metal building... Road is moving forward, the actual pre-engineer metal building will be delivered sometime in the next couple of weeks. All the, generally, all the site work besides the paving and the foundational work will be started at the same time the building's coming. The quick history lesson, just recent history lesson, obviously been at it for quite some time. Back last year, we received $1.35 million grant from the state with the help of Senator Comittee and Senator Muth. We, that took us to Meridian Bank, where we received a $2 million financing to move forward with hiring the general contractor and them starting to dig in the dirt back last August. And probably no, meaning we've raised about $2.6 million from private donors within the community, so it's been a real sort of team effort, and so that's why I'm here, we've kind of done this with all three, with the other two townships at this point, where I, we're requesting some financial assistance. We feel that the community got behind it, and this isn't my vision, this was a vision given to me by the campaign consultant we hired back in 2016. They, and the plan is kind of going as planned, they told us we needed to get the community fully involved, we did at $2.6 million. We, they said, "Go to the state, try to get the state to vacuum, then go to local governments, and once that occurs, let's go to the corporate community." So, that's where we are. We've presented this beginning last October to, I went to Charlestown, Willistown, and I'm here because you guys are more intimately involved with this, and you, just because it's a township, I've been here like a number of times. We've got a commitment and received some money from Charlestown already, Willistown, we were supposed to be in there in December, we got in front of them in January, and, you know, I'm here today to just make the request. So, any questions?
What is the request?
What's that?
What is the request?
Request is, we're looking for, we received $1.35 million from the state, we were hoping that the townships would all kick in the same amount collectively, that $1.35 million, looking to spread that over multiple years. We've got a commitment from Charlestown for $100,000 a year for three years, receive that first payment in January, as I said, I'm waiting back to hear from Willistown.
Are there any, are there... Any specific benefits for those that contribute for the residents versus those that don't?
What's the continuing relationship between the townships and G B C O, residence-wise, all that stuff?
Can somebody, are you able to pull up our website on there? Just go into GBCO.org. This'll depict her's worth a thousand words.
Keith, why we're waiting, Keith?
Just slide right down there. So, this, basically, it's a depiction of how many residents within our Gray Valley School District footprint use our programming. This is just a five-year look, we've been around for 22 years, we took this back to 2017. You can see each one of the townships, it was one in the borough, I don't think the borough is, but, so, our programming is for Gray Valley School, our basketball program, let's use that, so we've got 900 kids that play in our basketball program. None of those kids are outside the district, that we, our footprint is the district, and we're looking to service the immediate community. We don't have a facility, we know we're going to run out of space, even with the facility we're going to build. So, we're just looking to service the residents in the three townships in the borough with what we have. We cannot be exclusive with one township or another, just because we're located in East Whiteland, doesn't mean that, you know, East Whiteland should receive any more benefit, because again, we're the Gray Valley Community Organization, so we're looking at the entire footprint of the district. That doesn't mean that we're, you know, extremely open, I talked to Steve, I, we're, me personally, I'm very excited about the park going in, Backton Hill Park, it's right across the street, and it's, when we had the old G V B Health Center, which was the building right next to where we're billed, there were cars pulling in, people taking their bikes off in the back parking lot and riding down Backton Hill to get on the trail. Well, you know, that's not, that's probably pretty dangerous. So, the vision and the planning commission, way back, I think in 2015 when I was in here, one of the first things they, was required of us was to put a trail along Backton Hill on our property, which is part of, I don't even, you guys would know, rail line that goes through there, that's a trail. Well, Chester Valley, but connecting the rail line that goes right through that school property, that goes over to the vault, the vault trail that's...
Right, right, and as we had discussed, we've already started talking to engineering and looking for grant money for some type of safe passage between your future property and the Backton Hill property, and then we also ended up talking about program sharing between the two entities and utilizing our brick and mortar, you know, and the Backton Hill Park to share.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I like the vision, I like the sharing, I think residents could certainly get a lot, working with you guys, you have a lot of programs, it's a great program. It's a sizable commitment, you know, we obviously need to talk about at this point in time.
Yep.
So, I guess we'll begin talking about it at some point here.
Sure. What's your construction schedule?
The first phase of the building is supposed to open in August.
Twenty-three, this year?
Yeah.
Okay. How big's the building?
The first phase is 16,000 square foot, and then the second phase, the total building was 41.
Phew, okay. And the financing you have in place and our planning covers just the first phase for now?
Yeah, that's the, so, what we're looking to do is get to the townships, and that's going to reduce our debt.
Right, sure.
Right, to give us the ability to move forward.
Right. You're going to have an adult crew program, or just for the kids?
Well, I was just about to say, I was just about to say, what, the vision way back when had everything to do with adults, and really, quite frankly, now that I'm there, as seniors, because there just isn't, there is no, there's nothing for, I mean, you go to Wawa, seniors having coffee, or you go down to McDonald's, there's seniors having coffee, there's nowhere to go, and just having a spot to go to. We'll, the kids, I talk about the 900 kids playing basketball, we could, we'll, it's a pain, it's a pain for us to go to Phelps and go to the middle school and go to the elementary schools, and it's a logistical nightmare, but we get it done, so...
Wow.
So, that's, you know, if the building never happens, that basketball program would probably still, somebody else would have, would probably still exist, but that's kind of not what we're after, we're looking, we're looking for a place to run our community programming, our 15 interns now that work for us currently, and we work out of trailers and we space. Carrying hands, who we're working with, all the local, you have the Fraser Food Pantry, the Home of the Sparrow, Cradles to Crayons, local, local community-type programming.
Right.
That's what's lacking here, and, but that's, go ahead.
So, yeah, again, I, you know, it's a great program, we've got to kind of talk about it, we'll probably, we'll probably come up with a lot of questions and maybe bring you back at a time where, you know, you can expand a little more, we can talk to you a little bit more, and, but I think we can get a kind of a feeling and discussion amongst ourselves as far as, you know, kind of next steps at this point. I mean, again, great reputation, so.
Thank you.
Done a great job so far, I've got 900 kids, and you don't even have a building.
Oh, well, that's been for a while.
Wow, that's great.
Honestly, I'm, like, we've got 100 kids doing community service, not something we had even 2019, and that's where the real impact occurs, and it's really tough to just do that, because you got nowhere to really do, right?
Yeah, that's right.
So, you're doing things out in the middle of the field there, and where if you had space to do those kind of things, it's kind of endless, really.
Other than the building itself, what's your, you have, what's your operating budget a year, a year?
The operating budget currently is about $375,000.
Okay.
We expect that to go, again, that's all on the site, we're trying to, the site, very, very transparent, like, all the numbers and everything are on there, so if you want to see what we project out from five years from when the door is open, it's...
Good, that's helpful. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Keith.
Thanks for having me.
Donna, anyone out there, awake? Moving forward, I will read the consent agenda, any questions, let me know. 10A, approve the meeting minutes from January 11th, 2023. Ratify payments of bills, the amount of $2,506,957.65 for December of 2022. Accept the treasurer's report as of January 2023. Accept the 2023 summer camp fees and scholarships. I'll make a note to the residents that the summer camp is open for registration as well as for camp counselors for job applications as well. Approve the Chester County Municipal Grant Program contract extensions for the following properties, Balderson and Springridge Extension till April 3rd, 2024, and Backton Hill Park Extension to October 14, 2023. Approve the Delta Development Agreement Extension, that's our partner that's working with us on binding grants throughout the state and primarily spending time with us on the Raze Grant Program. Approve the Power D M S software purchase for Fire and Emergency Services Department for the amount of $7,233. Approve the application for a Chester County Preservation Partnership Program grant in the amount of $200,000 maximum, with a deadline of February 28th, 2023, and for the resolution 2023-15 for the comfort stations at the intersection of the Chester County Trail and Mill Lane. Approve the conceptual design and the cost estimate for the comfort station at that intersection in the amount of $579,451. Approve the purchase of a multipurpose vent-track trailer with attachments for $56,266.55 from Power Pro Equipment, which is part of the Co-Stars agreement. Any questions, anyone has on any of those items? If not, meeting is adjourned.
We got a motion.
We got the motion.
Motion to approve...
I reopen.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
I have to re-advertise this file.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're out of here. Thank you for your patience.
We have to come back tomorrow night.